I'd like to call the Budget Work Session for the South Kingstown Town Council. This is our third session to order Wednesday, March 9th, and the time is 6:45. If you could all please, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Tonight is our third night on the agenda for tonight is Accounts 1005 Human Services to Account 1810 Contingency includes employment benefits, debt service, and capital improvement plan. And Accounts 0810 Police to Account 0880 Emergency Medical Services. So, welcome. This is the largest audience that we've had. So, thank you for coming. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred at this time. Thank you.
As far as tonight's agenda is concerned, we were going to start with the human service agencies and we will start with those. However, we did have one request to have one of the outside agencies, the Chamber of Commerce, asked to be heard first since they have another meeting to attend out of town. So, based on that request, I think we could start with the Chamber of Commerce and then we'll go back to Human Services. So, as far as the request that's been filed is a request, if you start on page N40 or GF19 is the Human Services. Request on the Chamber is GF25. Joe, you want to come forward?
For the folks at home.
GF25. But you're only going to be on that while Joe's there. And then on the narrative, page 39.
And 39.
This evening, getting ready for Red Sox, so batting first is nice. Good evening. As many of you know, I'm Joe Iacoy, the current Director of the South Kingstown Chamber of Commerce, and I'm proud to be working in the community as your Executive Director. The Chamber has a long, proud, and well-documented history of providing services and advocacy since 1933 in this community. And as I said, it's a pleasure to be here this evening along with a few of my board members, Richard Pike and John Gates. And speaking before this council this evening, the Town Manager and the supportive staff, I want to just say thank you for your past support and all the good. We continue to foster together as our Chamber continues to become more involved in many good initiatives this community faces for the business community and taxpayers of South Kingstown. South Kingstown has long, long recognized the challenges and benefits of being a seasonal community, along with the pride of our state university that we are proud to say is in our town. Today, the town is faced with managing a steadily increasing number of visitors and summer residents who are coming to South Kingstown online and in person, and even by a trolley ride. I'm here this evening representing 21 hard-working, community-minded Board of Directors and a staff of a part-time Membership Service Coordinator and a part-time Events Coordinator and myself as the full-time Director. Our Chamber is one of the fastest-growing chambers in the state in the last 10 years, and our 606 members represent the largest Chamber in Southern Rhode Island. Our members are enjoying new member-to-member benefits, many new professional initiatives, education seminars, business shows, job fairs, Student Government Day, a new and improved gift certificate program that enhances the shop local campaign, a new business directory, and more and more networking events. A big undertaking for our Chamber this past year has been to help the regional economic conditions of our state and especially South County. You never know who's going to walk in to the front door at the Chamber. It's been recognized as the gateway to Wakefield since September 2007. We are the official Town Welcome and Information Center, welcomed over 4,500 people to South Kingstown last year at our facility. We have the tourist department handling thousands of requests for information, providing directions, helping visitors find rooms, giving restaurant and contractor referrals, help plan a family weekend for many URI parents, or a date to beach along South County Rhode Island's coastline, and event information for many community-wide events. I feel we're the nerve center of the town. Our efforts to promote South Kingstown as a destination are both extensive and effective, and they directly result in revenues brought to this town. We are a one-stop treasure chest of resources for many, and we feel we're linked, needed between the community, the businesses, and the visitor. Our programs and events alone more than justify the town's continued support of the Chamber. It is one of the few of the town's agencies that can actually quantify a return on the town's investment, and a significant return at that. We have not taken the funds for granted, and we feel that we have a tremendous amount to show for the funds entrusted to execute the town's Chamber programs over the years. During the past few months, I've taken time to review and study the town's revenue stream. Our local hotel and beverage tax have seen to increase over the last three fiscal years, totaling something like $634,000 over the last three years. This is a positive to our business community, and we at the Chamber only receive 1% of that total intake that our $7,000 funding relates to. We need to push events to increase the shoulder seasons. The off-season is needed, and the good direction we have taken, especially with the free trolley initiatives, is on top of our list to help business owners move folks around at no cost to the town. We need funds to advertise and support all local businesses that you send a tax bill to, and get events coming to town. I think we can do more, and I think we can get more return on the investment for the town. We know and feel under these challenging economic times and your perseverance during this budget process and meeting the many needs of many Town Agencies' requests, we are asking you this evening to exchange the Town Manager's proposal for the Chamber's level funding and FY 2011-2012 proposal and your proposal this evening, which is for the second year in a row. And via a memo we sent on December 21st, 2010, to reconsider and support our primary request this year is to extend a full property and personal property tax exemption as of 12/31/2010 on our property at 230 Old Tower Hill Road. The South Kingstown Chamber is an essential part of the community. We do an outstanding job for the town, and we have a tremendous support base, some business owners, some volunteers, some just families who enjoy numerous community events. We want to publicly say we are very well received by our Town Manager and his staff on many issues, and feel we can do a lot more working together for the economic stability of the business community. I am very confident that the Town Council, after their due diligence, will once again support this new exchange request this year. You have a strong sense of what is right for businesses, and you all know that you need to reach out to the Chamber businesses that all help promote the local economy and stabilize the town's tax base, especially during these challenging economic times. The Chamber continues to fill that essential role. We hope all elected and appointed officials understand the Chamber and the needs of the business community and support us this year and for the years to come. Our Board of Directors and staff lead this network of business advocates dedicated to improving South County's local economy, business climate, and the quality of life. Your support to our Chamber sends an important signal to the business community. And to wrap up, just thank you for allowing me to say a few words this evening, and I appreciate your dedication, and I know our Board and membership do also for all you do for the town of South Kingstown. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to.
Do we have questions here at the table?
Answer.
Carol.
Yes, Joe, you said you had 606 members at the Chamber. How many new members did you pick up in the year 2010?
Good question. 2010 was a challenging year for us. We picked up 110 new members, and that was for fiscal year, November of '09 to October 31st of 2010, because I have to go on a fiscal year. That's our FY year, not similar, not like you have here, July to June. And we probably lost, due to the economy, net-net type thing, we probably lost about 46 members due to the economy merges, businesses that closed up in similar situations. And then we saw a big increase in home-based businesses, which people that lost their jobs developed their own little businesses, be it computer services, or be it internet service, or be it CPA or bookkeeping service. So, we did see that increase in the year 2000.
That's good. And as far as the networking events, how many would you say you have a year approximately?
As some of you know, and you attend, and it's very nice to have you attend our events. We do three a month, so we do about 36 to 40 events. We're trying to do those regionally with our neighborhood chambers, be it North Kingstown, Narragansett, Chalston, and it's been very successful for our membership and for their memberships too, as they network with different members.
And your attendance has been pretty good, I would say.
Yeah, we're very happy.
Especially the ones I've been to, so.
Maybe it's because you come.
Well, I certainly think you do a great job, and I just wanted to mention the Business and Community Guide that you put out, very nice.
Yeah, this is a major undertaking in 2011 for us. We're doing this in-house. We're saving some costs, you know, that were related to the publication of our prior community guides, and we're doing it in-house with limited staff, and it's coming out pretty good. We publish about 5,000 of these that go through the community at various locations, train station, Route 95, visitor center, URI campus, local supermarkets, CPA firms, things like that, that's starting to get popular around town.
Well, I think you've been quite a cheerleader for the local businesses and helping tourism come into the town, and we certainly need that in these times.
Thank you.
Good job.
Polly.
Your membership is made up of South Kingstown and Narragansett?
No. Membership is made up of our ZIP code, 02879, and other ZIP codes around us. We do have Narragansett Chamber, we probably have about 38 members that have a dual membership. We do work with Narragansett in many ways. We have a street map that you have here at the Town Hall that we've worked with the Narragansett Chamber and the South Kingstown Chamber, working with one of our members to put up a nice community map. And we're starting to do more with Narragansett Chamber, and we have a reciprocal membership, we call it. So, if you're a member of our Chamber and your home base is SK, your membership in Narragansett Chamber would be at a reduced price, and vice versa. So, that's one of the first in the state that Deb Kelso and I and a couple of Board members from each Chamber got together last year, and we developed this reciprocal membership. And we have members outside of our ZIP code, you know, Warwick, Providence. In fact, today, I'm proud to present Channel 10 joined us as a member. So, it's becoming an effort for us, but we're outreach and through the Board of Directors and through our membership committees to bring in new faces to the community, so it's working very well.
Further questions here? Jim?
Joe, can you talk about the trolley, its effect last summer, what it costs to lease it or own it, and what kind of contributions you guys do in funding it?
Thank you. That's a great question, because I wanted to talk more about it, but I didn't know if Mr. Alfred was going to let me speak. But, more and more, but that's a great question, because the Chamber, Narragansett and the South Kingstown very much got behind the Southern Rhode Island Trolley LLC. It's a separate member business to both of our chambers, and the effort and the purchase of the Chamber of the trolley was through Chamber memberships. The businesses really supported that to the tune of about $52,000 for the advertising, for the gas, for the operators, for the weekend salaries and so forth. It's been very well received. We have been critiquing it in the last couple of months, getting ready for Memorial Day kickoff again. We had it in the parade last year, if you remember. That was the initial time that the Memorial Day Parade, we had the opening of the trolley. But the businesses have really come forward to support that, and we're going to tweak the route a little bit this year, and it's a two-hour flex. We are working, hopefully administration here and administration with Ripda to see if we can pick up a surplus trolley so we can have two, so there'll be a one-hour flex instead of a two-hour flex program. So, that tourist or that shopper that gets dropped off at Fat Belli's Pub can get back to the beach in an hour and things of that nature, and go to the Wakefield Mall versus shopping in Pier Marketplace, things like that. So, we are working to see if we can better the trolley program, but it's very much supported not by Chamber, just by the businesses themselves.
And Ripda owns the trolleys or they private?
No, it's owned by the Southern Rhode Island Trolley LLC. It's a separate company. And they use the Chamber memberships of both chambers to gather the advertising to support the financial expenditure, which is about $52,000.
Further questions here at the table? Polly?
Yes. And it's a free trolley ride, and it starts, if I can, it starts at the Holiday Inn, comes down to the South County Commons, it brings you into the Wakefield Mall, it brings you back down to Main Street, up to the Muse, it makes a turn up by the Muse Tavern, it comes back up. This year, we're going to take a right on Robinson Street to gather that area, and it's going to bring you out to Belmont Market. It's going to take a right on 108 to bring you into Narragansett, all the way to Scarborough, up to Bonnet Shores, and back to the Holiday Inn. So, there's a two-hour loop there, and we did have some feedback about the weight, but we hope to correct some of that stuff.
Jim?
Yeah, just some comments here. Our meals and hotel tax receipts in town here, I know I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but it's one of our few growth areas of our economy, at least from the tax receipts that we see, and obviously our share of it. And you guys do a great job helping bring in that $600,000 plus, and yeah, you're right, our contribution to you is under 1%. What really makes that quite phenomenal is when I spoke with the state at a recent meeting, just five years ago, the State Tourism Council, we had over $3,100,000 budget for the state tourism, and now we're at $720,000, which makes, as you said, our return on investment quite impressive. So, that's more of a commentary, but your work has really produced some great results for us.
And we're working to increase that number. As I mentioned just quickly in my little brief talk, is we're going to have a Restaurant Week this fall. We want to have a Restaurant Week. We really want to turn a Restaurant Week into a Restaurant Month next winter. So, we have some off-season activity with the dining and the restaurants. Our membership with the restaurants, we have like 48 members that are in the dining category that really want to have something in this community. So, we're working on that, and more to come on that good stuff. So, we want to do that stuff so that increase can help you here with the revenue stream on your budget, and I know it plays a major role into it, believe me.
Any further questions here at the table? I just had one question, Joe. With your request, you have continued support with either of the following, Plan 1 or Plan 2. We usually level funding, or what we have funded in the past has been $7,000.
Correct.
And I believe that's what we have budgeted for this year. And Plan 2 is to adopt a full-town property, real estate, and personal property tax exemption. So, is that a washout with what your request is? That you're requesting a tax exemption and not going to accept the $7,000, is it a washout?
Right. That's what I was saying earlier. We'd like to take the exchange if we could, is the manager's recommendation of $7,000, which my original request was 11. Bring it down, he recommended, and rightfully so, the seven, level-funded till last year and the year before. And we thought we could exchange for that the property tax exemption, which the total assessment would be higher than the $7,000, so the town would realize the funds that way, and we would benefit from it, and then we could not have to come to the town anymore as an agency in the future, and just try and make your revenue up through the 1% meal tax and the hotel tax, and drive some of that money back into the town, and work very hard because of the support you're giving us based on our request if the exemption goes through.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarified. And I too just want to say that, you know, we do value all of the work that the Chamber has done, and we do support our local businesses, and we appreciate, you know, Mr. Bates and Mr. Pike being here tonight also. I have attended, as well as many other Town Council members here, a lot of the events that you have sponsored, the golf ball drop, Dancing with the Stars, the list just goes on and on. So, we thank you and applaud you for all of your efforts on behalf of the town of South Kingstown. Thank you.
Thank you to each of you on your end, and good luck. Nice to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, Jim, the numbers are about to be given. N33 for the human service agencies.
Gosh. All right.
And page GF19.
N33, and what's the other baby?
GF19.
That still stand for general fund?
When you find it, say bingo.
I know, but no, how much difficult I have by these things.
First agency on the listing, let me grab that.
GF19, right?
Is it 19?
GF19, yes. Our first agency on the listing is South Shore Mental Health. The request is for $15,000. The proposal from the manager is $15,000. Is there someone here from South Shore Mental Health? Hearing anybody? We'll move to Hospice of Washington County, request for $1,500, recommendation for $1,500. For anybody here from Hospice? If not, we'll move on to VNS Home Health Services. VNS Home Health Services requested $25,000. My recommendation was a $1,000 reduction from the current year to bring that to $24,000. Is there folks here from VNS? If not, we move on to Thundermist Health Center. Thundermist's request was for $25,000, recommendation is for $24,000, a $1,000 reduction from the funding request, and a $1,000 reduction from what current year is. So, if we have somebody here from Thundermist, please come forward. And I'd ask if you could identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name's Carrie Strickland. I'm the Executive Director of Thundermist, South County, and I'll take less than a minute. I just wanted to make sure to be here tonight to thank you for your ongoing support and just say how grateful we are that you are proposing that the appropriation be as much as it is. This is our 41st year of operation, and you've helped us through a lot of them. We saw 31,000 encounters this year. Of those, 17,000 were uninsured or underinsured, which meant 125,000 in free care that we did, so your appropriation will go a long way to helping us with that. And this was for basic medical, dental, behavioral health, lab work, pharmacy help, tobacco cessation programs. So, it makes a huge difference for 2,400 South Kingstown residents, often helping people stay, keep body and soul together to get re-employed, or we take care of a lot of people who work in the service industry here who don't have insurance through work and depend on our flat fees and our sliding fees. And seeing as I'm on TV, I'll make a plug for, we also take insured people, because a lot of people don't know that. So, my second reason in being here was just to see, to be here in case you have questions. So, do you have any?
Any questions, Polly?
Carrie, we do take anyone at Thundermist.
Yes. All regardless of ability to pay. And if, we take care of a lot of homeless through a federal grant that we have.
Kathy?
I just have to say, I'll leave about Thundermist, but it's a great, great organization to be doing my past job, I'm responsible, and I do all of the quality of Thundermist organization, although I have gotten up to the new one. I've sat in the waiting rooms, I've seen new patients, and really you do good work. A lot of the physicians and nurse practitioners, nurses who all work here, so you're having a huge reaction to you, and I think I'm, a lot of it happened, I've seen more people coming into the, I'm sitting in the waiting rooms from West Wall, out here at Wakefield, South Wakefield, I mean, you guys do a great job, and really to all the doctors and nurses who I miss because I don't get to go a call, and they're very good people in the home facilities, and you do, and I just want to compliment you for what you did.
Thank you. I'll relate that to my staff.
Carol?
Yes, Carrie, I think you do a great job over there too. And just to clear it up, I didn't realize, you don't have any criteria to come to your facility? You don't have, if you have insurance, you can just?
We used to have about a third insured.
There's no scale for income or anything?
If people need assistance, like sliding scale fees, they have to qualify by the federal poverty guidelines.
So, you don't turn anyone away, is what you're saying?
Nobody. And we do payment arrangements, hardship write-offs.
Very good. Yeah, we certainly need that in these times. I would imagine you have a bigger clientele than usual, would you say?
We actually shrunk a tiny bit this year because we lost a long-term doctor, but we've rehired someone, and we're back on track, so we expect to grow about 10% this year.
Wow. So, there's no waiting list or anything?
No, no, no. In fact, we do, we have what's called advanced access. It's like open booking. We hold more than half of the schedule each day so people can get in when they need to, and open evenings and all day Saturdays, and about to add another evening.
How many employees do you have at this facility?
Forty-one, I think, yeah.
Any other questions? Jim?
Can you maybe give me a number again on your South Kingstown clients over the past year, or average over the past few years?
2,400 this year, and it's been fairly constant over the last few years. There's a churn, you know?
You broke that down into families?
I didn't come prepared with that number. I could get it for you.
Break down all your reimbursements for me, what comes from, you know, a request like South Kingstown, what insurance companies cover, what the state covers. Do you end the year with deficits? Are you covered by various grants?
A wide variety of sources. We do fundraising, we have a big dinner dance in the spring, and this, we have a big federal grant that covers the, some of the sliding scale and uninsured, not all of it.
State Medicaid, too?
Yep, state Medicaid.
But have you been able to cover your bills over the last few years, or you?
We finished in the black the last three years, I believe.
Wow, nice going.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Great job. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one quick question, Carrie. In the hours that you're open?
We're open until 8:00 PM Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday evening, till 5:00 Tuesday and Friday, and Saturday, 8:30 to 5:00.
That's great. And I just want to thank you and echo all of the comments you, you know, hear at the table. This is definitely an asset to our community, and you are very valued, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jim, just to answer your question, total client base was 6,836, of which 2,424 or 35.5% were from South Kingstown.
Thank you.
The local share of South Kingstown dollars versus the other communities, we're providing The local share of South Kingstown dollars versus the other communities, we're providing almost 90% of what the Washington County communities are supporting that agency for.
That's the Washington County communities.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Next organization is Phoenix Marathon House. Phoenix Marathon House requested 12,000, recommendation was for 12,000. There's no one here, we move on. Johnny Cake Center of Peasdale requested funding, 22, was $25,000. That's up from the 20,000 received in the current year. And my recommendation was to take the money that we distributed from the other larger agencies and to put that into the Johnny Cake Center for a $22,000 recommendation. In terms of the same question, Jim, on, on this organization, total clients, total clients served were 1,862. And clients on this basis would be family, family or individual, of which 1,019 were South Kingstown associated for about 54, almost 55% of the client base coming from, from our community.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Gostadis, Executive Director of Johnny Cake Center and South Kingstown resident. I passed out to you some of our recent statistics and also a copy of our most recent newsletter. You'll notice with the statistics, they're showing a slight decrease in what we're providing right now. And there's a couple of reasons for that. As Steve had mentioned, 54% of our clients do come from South Kingstown. And then, some of those also come from Narragansett for a total of 74%. The remainder of those 26% are coming from the outline areas, particularly North Kingstown. And so, what we did at the beginning of this year was to ask those folks, as they were coming back in to recertify with us, which we do every year, is to go back into their community. And we researched all the food pantries that were located in North Kingstown, Exeter, East Greenwich, and contacted all those pantries. And so, now, we're referring those folks out to their communities so that, and that's the reason for some of the decrease. We also have had some folks report to us that have gotten onto food stamps that are not coming to us every month now. So, that's been a huge help as well. We're being very cautiously optimistic because, as we all know, the food prices have gone up, the oil's gone up, the gas has gone up, and it's been a tough winter for a lot of people. So, we're keeping that in mind as we're going forward. What those statistics don't show and those numbers there are the faces of the folks that we see. And I know that you were with us at Thanksgiving and you saw some of the folks that we have come to us. And I just wanted to share just a couple of things that have happened recently with us. We had a gentleman come in a couple of weeks ago with his young daughter. She was about five. And he was coming in to get food, had no food in the house. There were four children in that house. We were obviously able to help him with that. In that process, the little girl had on some very worn and wet gloves and, of course, it was during the snow time. And so, we were able to provide her a brand-new pair of gloves. We also helped a man who had just been released from prison. He showed up at our door the day after he had gotten out and he was looking for food, but he also wanted some hand lotion. His hands and everything were very dry. We were able to provide him that and the simple things like a toothbrush and toothpaste and deodorant. There's also an elderly lady that we deliver food to. And she's in a wheelchair. She's been kind of homebound because of the winter. She calls us every time she gets delivery to tell us how grateful she are, she is to us that we can bring that food to her and that she has the food from us. There's a fisherman who came to us and this was probably within the last month. And this is, stays on my staff's mind right now. He was brought in by someone and he had not eaten in a few days. And to see that face of hunger was very, very scary and very difficult to deal with. We actually had to sit him down and give him some hot cocoa and a snack bar before we could ever even take him to the next step of getting him to the food pantry. There's also the 169 children that participated in the lunch program at the schools this year that we provided a meal to while they were on vacation just this last month. Those are the faces of the clients that we see, but also the other folks that come through our door are the faces of all of our donors. We have a very, very generous community and I want folks to know that. This has just been extremely unprecedented past couple of years and folks have stepped up a lot. The Lions Club that came in, they did their pier plunge and they donated those funds to us. The Neighborhood Guild who did a drive for the hats and gloves and scarves and mittens, that's where I got the gloves to provide that little girl. The local businesses such as the banks and credit unions, People's Credit Union donated, they did a drive and was able to bring in cereal. We provided that to those children that were participating in the lunch program. Our area churches, Christ The King, did a book drive. Those kids were on vacation. They got the lunch. They got a new book to read while they were on vacation. Our farmers, such as Farmer's Daughter, Sosnowski with potatoes. The teachers' unions in the schools, URI, the fraternity over there did a toll-to-drive. That's where I got the lotion and that's where I got the toothbrush for that gentleman we spoke of. The Southern Rhode Island Volunteers who delivered that food to that elderly lady. The Wakeville Rotary that gave us the money so that we could buy apples and bananas for the lunch program. The grocery stores such as Belmont Stop &amp; Shop that allow us to put the bins out there at the holiday time. Shaw, so we just started a new program with them. It's called the Rescue Meat Program. We now go up there on Thursdays and they give us meat that they can no longer sell because it's past the date, but it's still good for consumption. And the countless number of families and individuals who through 2010 donated 50 tons of food to the agency. So, thank you for coming and enjoying time with us on Thanksgiving. I hope you'll do it again. Really do appreciate you being there. Also, want to invite you to our community mobilization on hunger, which is going to be on April 7th. And it's going to be at the Peast Hill Congregational Church. This is the fifth year that we've held that. And I hope that you'll look at the newsletter. There's an article in there about Thanksgiving. And there's also some new things that we're doing with nutrition that are being spoke about in that newsletter. So, questions?
Thank you. So, questions here at the table? This is overwhelming. Jim?
Yes, so, how did you explain the falloff? I'm just looking at a number of these stats, cumulative meals, food pantry, number of households, January, February this year, even December. What was the falloff? How do you account for that?
It's because we're, we're starting to take the North Kingstown clients that were coming to primarily, there's about 13% of those clients are from North Kingstown. We've now researched all the food pantries in that area and we're asking those folks to go to their town to get services instead of coming down to Johnny Cake Center. So, that's decreasing those numbers.
Okay, right.
Polly?
They are. And everyone that comes to us says new. We always assess for that first to make sure because that's their first line of defense. And we do help them. We have applications on there. We have, at our center, we have staff that are trained to help fill those out. Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes. They did. And I don't have how much the food bank raised from that because it was their project and I could certainly find out. It's kind of, it was a kind of a short-span thing that they did. So, it's, it's pretty much over now. Although, we do have, Arnold Lumber has cans that they, every week, they bring to me and we get them new ones. So, it's, but it's pretty much over right now. It is very good campaign. Oh, we definitely did. We had cans at our place all the time that people were dropping off and we became a drop-off point. And then, we would get them to the food bank. When the truck came down with the food, they'd take them back for us so that folks didn't have to travel. Thank you. It does. Thank you.
Carol?
Sue, I just want to say we're lucky to have you in the community. The service that you provide and the face of hunger that you describe and need is, it really pulls at the heartstrings and it's good to have, thank goodness we have you and keep up the good work.
Well, I feel it's an honor to be there. Thank you.
I just want to basically give three dates so that we can support you here. I see that there's a community baby shower, May 7th. That sounds really exciting. So, if anyone in the community, they're looking for new baby items. And then, the spring dinner, the Gala Fundraiser, which is at Theater By The Sea. It's May 19th. So, if people wanted to, you know that we do, you stated, we have a lot of support for the community. That's why, um, maybe some people are out there listening. May 7th, the baby shower and the spring Gala Fundraiser. And then, the 5th Annual Hunger Awareness Day down at the Guild. That's a yearly event. That's well-attended. So, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on any of those, but?
Great events to attend, especially the May event. It's being something that our board took on last year. They did a great job with it. They're going to be doing it again. We had a great time. So, come out and support that. As well as the baby shower is a way for us to get diapers and new baby clothing for folks that need it.
And tickets for these events, they can buy?
The, the only tickets are right now are for the May event and they can call the Johnny Cake Center. We can take care of that.
Thanks, Sue. I'm sorry, Jim?
Sorry. Maybe an opportunity here with the camera and folks at home to, where's your greatest need right now in terms of food or clothing items? Maybe speak to the audience at, at home. But what do you need? What can the community respond to?
I think our greatest need right now is to get clothing into the store. Because a lot, a lot of folks are, are not donating as much because they're not replacing things as much and that has to do with the economy. So, our store is not doing as well, which is typical of a lot of businesses right now. So, when you're doing that spring cleaning, get the clothes and furniture and things that you don't need down to us so that we can sell those and in turn have revenue to support what we're doing. Thanks.
Good question.
Does Big Sisters cut into your, the store? I was wondering because they, like I got a mailer today, you know, and I think they?
Yeah, they can, but, you know, it just depends on where, they go everywhere and, and, yeah.
I don't want to say, but I was just wondering if you see the stores?
Right.
Sue, do you need children's clothes? Because many times you don't need.
We are not allowed to take children's clothes because of the new lead law.
Oh.
So, we cannot sell them because we cannot guarantee or check the, particularly in zippers and, and things like that. So, that, that is a huge problem for us, but mainly adult clothing. We prefer to take new children's clothing for that Little Cakes program.
Thank you.
Great information. Thank you.
Next agency is the Kane Daycare Center. Kane's request was for $9,000. The recommendation is for, for the $9,000. Is there anyone here for Kane Daycare? If not, South County Community Action. South County Community Action requested $35,000. The recommendation is for $24,000. This is a $1,000 reduction from what the current year funding level was. Is there anybody here from CAP? If not, we'll move on to Welcome House of South County. I see Linda Barden. The agency requested $8,000. Recommendation was $6,000, which is a $1,000 increase over the, the prior year. And could I ask everybody to use the microphones because we're having difficulty with the recording if we don't have those mics on for the council? Linda, I'm sure we can hear you.
I take back my thank you, Steve. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Linda Barden. I'm the Executive Director of Welcome House of South County. Steve, thank you, not. And the council, the increase is severely needed, especially after last night's governor's address. There's going to be a 60% decrease in social service funding across the state. As it is, over 60% of our funding comes from the community, not state and federal and local grants. I just want to back up to something Joe Iaco said. And Jim, you asked about it, about meetings and networking meetings that they have. This year, Welcome House hosted the first Friday of 2011. They had the largest turnout at Welcome House in their history. The fire chief's not here, is he? We had over 50 people on the first floor. And our director of, we ran out of two 36-cup pots of coffee. And we had wonderful food and, and everything else. And I think people were just really interested in what it was like inside the homeless shelter. They were really impressed. They were really impressed. Guests escorted them through and, you know, showed them the, the first level of the facility, introduced them to Hope Anne, who is the Director of Security. She's 145-pound mastiff. And it was, it was just an amazing experience. We're members of the chamber. We are a part of the business community. We get referrals from the chamber. We get referrals from the Rotary. With that, I will tell you that the services that are needed by the people who come into Welcome House are exactly the same kind of services anybody in this room could possibly need or want. Or, if you have a crisis in your home, what you would need. From utilizing Thundermist to utilizing the food pantry that we utilize a lot, to South Shore Mental Health, to the chamber, looking for work, trying to make job connections. We, we're a small community. We're a strong community, but we're a small community. And we share the resources. When Senator Sosnowski comes down with 200 pounds of potatoes and 30 dozen eggs, Susan gets a call and her and I have these back-line conversations and we share them automatically with one another. There is no, well, I can't say this because then Susan will know that I'm doing this or Carrie will know that I'm getting that. We don't play that game. We share the resources because we feel as though the community is so generous to us and the towns all support our programs. You're sitting here and I've heard such wonderful comments from everybody tonight. I'm hearing the same kind of comments from the Narragansett Town Council, from the North Kingstown Town Council, and any place we go. We've got great reputations. But Steve's right, I do yell a lot. But, we get things done. I wish I could be more like Carrie who's, she's not meek by any standard, but she's, she's got more of a graceful, quiet about her. I think Steve wants me to be that, too.
Don't change.
Don't make me laugh. My teeth hurt. We were fortunate enough this year to get a Vista that we're, a student that we're sharing with URI. And so, we've been able to start capturing numbers of volunteers. In just the last four, possibly five months, we've seen over 24 South Kingstown residents coming in, providing over 361 hours of volunteer work. That doesn't include the other towns. It's just South Kingstown residents. That being said, a lot of the work is being done in our daily soup kitchen where we've provided over 4,500 meals just at lunchtime. And anywhere from 70 to 75% of the residents who are utilizing that soup kitchen, our South Kingstown residents, they're people who are working in local jobs. They are coming in and having a quick, very good lunch, I might add. You should stop in. We have a joke at the shelter with the, the gentleman who cooks our food makes the most amazing soups. And my mother used to call it refrigerator soup because anything that was in the refrigerator went in the soup. Well, we have a saying now. It's damn good broth. That's always a damn good broth. So, please feel free to stop in. DeVosey's Bakery sends us calzones and pizzas and some of the most wonderful pastries. They're day-old, but who doesn't need a day-old piece of pastry in your home? So, all of the community has been extraordinarily good to us. Our number's on as high as some of what you're hearing tonight, utilizing the food pantry and utilizing the health centers. Our number's on as high as some of what you're hearing tonight, utilizing the food pantry and utilizing the health centers. It's because people stay with us. It was an average of about 90 days. Now it's an average of five months. People can't get jobs. They have no money. They can't live with their families anymore. They have no place to go. They're extraordinarily depressed, and Carrie's right. They're seeing our clients for depression and some other psychiatric issues. I'll just tell you that the Chair of my Board is a psychiatrist with South Shore. And I was exasperated because we couldn't get somebody in immediately to social mental health. They were depressed. And Teresa said to me, Linda, if you had high blood pressure, do you need to go to a cardiologist? Or can your regular doctor treat you for high blood pressure? And that's exactly the type of collaborative work that the agencies are doing with one another. Thunder Mist will gladly see somebody with not a severe psychiatric dementia, but somebody who has depression and needs to be followed and followed with their medication. Somebody who comes in to us who just came out of the prison and doesn't even have their trap. Now, a trap is their wallet and personal belongings. They don't even have a photo ID because it's in their trap. We give them a voucher, and they go over to the Johnny Cake Center, and the Johnny Cake Center will give them clothes immediately so they can at least wash the clothes that they're in. Somebody who's finally got a job. We got some wonderful gift cards at Christmas time. We kind of hold some of those back so I can send somebody to Walmart to get a pair of steel-toed $20 shoes for work because they're not allowed to wear anything else at the new job. To help somebody get a white shirt because they've got to wear white and black pants and shirt. So whatever it is that you need in your home, for the aunt or uncle who's in a crisis, who walks into your home and you need to help them, is what we need at Welcome House and what we do. The services that we're providing are not solely with Welcome House. In the last month, I've received 10 calls from homeowners. They're about to go into foreclosure. They don't have heat. Gentleman called me. They don't have any heat. His wife's on a second bout of breast cancer. He was a licensed contractor, lost his business. While he had lost his business, he had a massive heart attack, led to becoming an insulin-dependent diabetic. He was out of work for quite some time, got a job as doing security at the hospital. The hospital decided to go with their own security system as opposed to an outside company. He lost that job, which is when his wife went into a second bout of breast cancer. They had no heat. They called South County Community Action, and this is not a dig to South County Community Action. It's a dig to the system. There was a six to eight week wait for heat the first week in February. A few of us got together. He happened to have a pellet stove that hadn't been used in a while. A few of us got together and put the $300 together for a pallet of pellets so we could at least heat the kitchen and living room of the house. He then said to me, I'm having a real problem. I sent him to another organization, gave him all the information, said, I'll call you right back. Three weeks later, he still had not heard. He was talking to me about the mortgage issue, and I said Rhode Island Housing has this great new program, and they do. I talked to Richard Godfrey a couple of weeks ago about it because of this situation. I said, I think you're applicable. At least apply. I gave him the number, called them, got all the paperwork, filled everything else out. Said to call this particular person and make an appointment. That was four and a half weeks ago. He still has not heard back from this woman. He said, Linda, I'm not asking for anything, but you know what I'd like you to tell people? The programs are out there. Do you know how hard it is for somebody like me to call up a social service agency who's always donated to social service agencies and tell them my hardship story? And I can't provide heat, and I'm going to lose my house. My wife's got breast cancer. Not sure how long I'm going to continue, be able to continue working and tell this story and not get a return phone call. That's why I called Richard Godfrey. Said, this isn't right. Those are the kind of calls that we're starting to get. We've gone through $1,500 in gas cards, helping people get to work, giving people gas money so they could get to the food pantry, so they can get to the soup kitchen. Because gas is so expensive. And rural poverty and rural homelessness is extraordinarily different than it is in an urban setting, where I can give you a rip tick and you can go to five different places in an hour's time. That's not what we have down here. We have wonderful support systems via the churches, the general community, the philanthropists who are in this community, and dedicated social service programs. But the issue of poverty and homelessness in a rural setting is extremely different. I won't bore you with a lot of other statistics and numbers, but I did write something down I wanted to mention to you. And I'm not sure where it is at the moment. Oh, bed nights. Of the 50 South Kingstown people that we had, the bed nights equaled 4,500 bed nights. Now, as most of you know, we have that building on the, red building on the corner of North and Kingstown Road. That's not our only building. And then we have 15 apartments within walking distance. We're providing all of them social services. Everything is supported transitional, supported permanent, or thresholds housing. They all need case management. There are four, there are three full-time people. There are three part-time people, and that's it. Well, because we do have one staff person who's 24/7, and that's Hope. But the only thing, other thing I would like to mention to you is this year on Good Friday is our annual 23rd Annual Walk for Shelter. And we have secured a local South Kingstown, new South Kingstown business to pull this off for us. And when you go by Welcome House tomorrow, you'll see a sign that says, Welcome Fancy Tomato. If any of you are Irish, you'll know what fancy tomato means. And so they're a brand-new business in town. They've only been here about three years. They're event planners, and they're doing an extraordinary job for extraordinarily little money. And so this will be our 23rd year on Good Friday, 9 o'clock, Peastale Congregational Church. We're looking forward to having a lot of fun and warmer weather. Do any of you have any questions?
Polly?
Fancy tomato, and was one of the questions I asked him when I interviewed him. Fancy tomato is an old Irish saying which can mean, it could be very nice, meaning that you're a well-composed, well-rounded woman. And that was a reference that people would make. Or as I originally knew it, it was somebody who was kind of uppity and didn't really know their position and who they really were. So it's an old Irish saying.
My grandmother said that before.
You've heard her say that?
Jim?
Yeah, have you gotten to the point where you've had to allocate funds? Have you not been able to help some of your clients or people that have called? I guess I'd love to know what your shortfall is, and obviously maybe bed nights, but immediate cash when it comes to gasoline cards to help people get to work, clothing. What are you, where have you had to allocate? Where are your shortfalls?
We have about $700 left in $10 gas cards. We're refusing eight, average eight people a day shelter because we don't have any beds.
These are new folks.
Yes. What we're doing is a phone screening process and giving priority to people from Washington County because there are other shelters in the state, and because we have a very nice system, I'm just not going to, you know, it's not the Ritz Carlton. We anticipate, of shelters, I'm hearing that's what it is. We're anticipating an extraordinary shortfall this year for the 2011, 2012 coming fiscal year. Because of the announcement last night, that means that over $17,000 will be removed from my budget. I only get $44,000 from the state. We're also anticipating a FEMA cut of anywhere between $12,000 and $15,000. This year, there was a massive cut with Citizens Energy Corporation out of Boston. Normally, we would get probably maybe 1,500 to 1,700 gallons of fuel oil paid for. We got 600 this year. With the price of oil, price of gas, and everything else going up. We had a board meeting last night where they've put some committees together and said, we need to take a hard look at what we're going to do about these cuts. We're bare-bones staffed now. We only have staff from 9 o'clock in the morning till 8 o'clock at night. The rest of the hours are provided by a volunteer and Hope. So it's, it's going to be an extraordinarily difficult year, and I don't know how we're going to handle it, but it will happen. We will keep the doors open if I have to move in. I become a South Kingstown resident, Steve.
So if I added that up, that's almost $50,000, 17 down, 12 to 15, and obviously the gallon, gallonage there, about $50,000 I'm at at the moment.
Carol?
Linda, you said you had the 15 apartments plus the red building, the Welcome House itself. And how many, did you say how many clients you have a year, like that you actually service? I know you said
In the family units?
That, that live, that need the housing.
Okay, I'm not understanding the question. I'm sorry. We count them differently? So the 50 that I'm talking about are the single homeless, the more of the transient population that is coming in, staying anywhere from three months to now five or six months.
And they stay where? At the
They stay right at that red house on the corner of, of North and Kingstown Road.
So that's the 50 you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many in the apartments?
Well, there are 13 apartments that put, we put families in, and then there are two units that we put singles living in a communal, shared environment. So sometimes that's a little difficult to count the numbers because they could be in and out. A family could stay with us for six months instead of permanently, or stay with us only for a transitional period of time, which is up to a two-year period of time. And I, I can certainly get those numbers for you. We have two single dads with custody of their children. The rest are, is a full family, husband, wife, three children. And the rest are single moms with one child. That's kind of different. Most of the families that we've had before have two or three children. Most of the single women who are coming in now only have one child with them. So those numbers can change very differently.
Now, at the red house, do they have a limited amount of time that they can actually stay there, or?
Well, Governor Kuchery originally said emergency shelter was 30 days. And I have no idea how anybody is expected to put their life back together after 30 days, including saving enough money to move into an apartment. I have to write justifications for those, anything over 30 days. Now I ignore doing those justifications. Automatically, people can stay up to 90 days as long as they're following the rules and they're actively looking for jobs and, and that kind of stuff. We've recently had some very, very difficult cases. You may or may not know that when somebody is applied for a social security disability, it can take over two years. We had a gentleman with us for 11 months. There's no way this man could work. Just his presentation had the intelligence, but because of physical description, presentation, nobody was going to hire him. We have a woman who's been with us now since last July, extraordinary medical issues, just had surgery at Rhode Island Hospital and was there for over 30 days. She is now recouping with us. Has had no TDI, no income, nothing. We're getting these cases in because they don't have any place at all to go while they're waiting. So while they're waiting, we're applying them for subsidized housing units. They're not eligible. They're not open. So we bust people when we hear, you know, a Section 8 list is opening up, or some kind of supported permanent housing is opening up somewhere. You, you have to know every single detail of what is out there and available in order to find that person who has very specific needs and get them fit into those categories. So we use every resource, and we've been known to make up some resources, design some.
Take out with the pennies and
That's still going on. It, it went off with the ban. We're talking about re-exposing it, shall we say? The pennies campaign. I would love to have, be invited by the South Kingstown manager to have change container, collection container.
She's talking to you.
Let's repeat that, Linda. You'd love to be invited by the town manager, too.
I would love to be invited by the town manager to supply the town hall with a change campaign collection bucket.
Who's the next agency?
We true, did you know we were twins? Different mothers, different fathers, but we're twins.
I was the nice one.
That's not what the nuns said. Does anybody else have any questions?
Further questions here at the table?
Thank you.
Again.
Better than the budget message.
I got a comment, but I can't make it. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Next agency is the Domestic Violence Resource Center. Funding request was for $6,000, $6,000. Recommendation is for $5,000. Is there anybody here with the Domestic Violence Resource? No? Education Exchange. Okay, we've got someone. Education Exchange requested $3,000. We provided level funding in the amount of 2,500. Please come forward.
Welcome.
I know it's a hard act to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred and Town Council. Kevin Barrett, I'm the new Board President of Education Exchange. Kevin Barrett, I'm the new Board President of Education Exchange, trying to fill in tonight for Peggy Benz, who's away at a board meeting up in Boston. On behalf of the exchange, really like to thank the town for your support last year in what was a really challenging situation for us. For those who don't know, we were evicted by the state from the government center, which our space still remains vacant. But any rate, fortunately for us, we were able to locate, relocate to the Lilypads Building, spending basically our entire investment portfolio, and we're able to build out the site. It's been a tremendously successful relocation for us. The piece and to give us a little plug right now, we have the VIDA program, which is a volunteer tax assistance program. If you need help with your income tax, we're open Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And officially, we close at nine, but if you slip in, we'll, we'll keep helping you. So far, and obviously we're a little less than halfway through the tax season, we've already assisted 145 people and returned to them over $335,000. So come on down. And the other piece is so far, last year, there were 31 folks from South Kingston who received their GEDs from the Education Exchange and 43 people from the town that were part of the Adult Literacy Program. This year, despite the fact that we were closed all summer while we were going through the relocation, so far, 15 folks from South Kingston have already qualified for their GEDs. And 44 people are involved in the Adult Literacy Program. We'd also like to thank you very much for your assistance with the Community Block Grant. And we were able so far to assist 12 people in the Workforce Readiness Program. And we're running Phase Two of the program this summer. So one of the good things about the relocation, we're, we won't go dark, we'll stay open all summer. And that's basically it. Any questions?
Questions here at the table? Carol.
Kevin, are your numbers up from last year, would you say? Not counting the summer when you were closed, but?
It, it varies widely. And, and part of it is, in some cases, some people have given up hope. On the other hand, some programs, the workforce readiness, college prep are way up. The other program that, that at this point, we've, we've done a first phase in, I'm trying to come up with a good term to describe it, but basically, high school students that may have dropped out because of the senior project, that they basically get behind the curve, it's a little late.
Portfolio.
Yes.
Yes, I know, I know a few kids that are going to your Education Exchange that fell way behind.
Yes. So one of the nice things about the exchange, one in terms of helping those folks get their GED, but the other piece is working with a local educator, Mark Hiley. We're putting a summer program together to work with upcoming high school seniors this summer to help them play catch-up and get the portfolios done.
That's a good idea.
That's fantastic.
Great location, I mean, location. I mean, it's, it really is conducive to learning, I would say. Very nice.
Further questions here at the table? Jim.
Have you been able to place any of your students, let's say, when they graduate into jobs or be able, that's not quite a level that you're at?
It's not quite the level we're at. And, and back to Carol's earlier question, the other program that's been very successful for us, and I know I forgot it, is, is what we call pre-CNA, and it's the Certified Nursing Assistance Program. We had a grant last year from Walmart, of all places, and that was extremely successful. And Jim, to your, to get back to your question, that's been really, a real good program, and we're able to feed folks into the CCRI program.
Further questions here at the table?
Thank you.
Um, Kev, I just have one comment to make. I've been over at the Education Exchange frequently, and the staff that, you know, works there is just not even, there's not even words to express the gratitude and the dedication of the staff. It's just phenomenal. So kudos and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say hi to Peggy Forrest, too.
Thanks.
The next agency is Washington County Coalition for Children. The budget amount was $400 in the current year. The request was for $1,000. We provided level funding at the $400 level.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Susan Orban. I'm coordinator of the Washington County Coalition for Children, and I've asked Eileen Stone to speak to you also because she is both a member individually and as a representative of the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. The agency that she works for is also a member of the coalition, and she can speak to what it's like to be a part of this coalition. For those of you that, that may not be familiar with the coalition, we are both an advocate, resource and meeting place about the region's children. And our mission is to be a voice that advocates for the health and well-being of children and families in Washington County, serving as both a catalyst and facilitator for improved services. So everything that you've heard tonight from all of these agencies has impacted families directly. They're working directly with families, and we're unlike all of them. Because we, a group of direct service providers, and I was one of them, I, two days a week, I work for visiting nurses and do home visits. So I'm in the field and seeing families. But those of us that we're meeting on a regular basis were concerned about what we saw as more and more kids falling through the cracks and big issues that were popping up in our community that weren't being addressed by the current providers. And we felt compelled to try to do something about that. And one of the first things that we did, and which, one of the things that we are most known for, is our tracking of data related to children. In December, we released our latest How Are the Children report. And I know that Scott Miller, who is a member of the coalition, wants to set up a joint school committee, town council meeting to share the key findings from the report for you. And so I know he'll be in touch with you about that. We've done that for a number of other town councils. So stay tuned for that. But that is one of the things that we're known for. We are also known for Children's Issues Forum that we hold every spring, and many of you have attended it in the past, I know. One of the other things that we're known for is our Holiday Gift Drive that we do with Casey's in town. It came about because, again, a need that was identified, that most of the gift-giving programs that were happening were servicing children 12 and younger, and teens were being left out. And so we partnered with Casey's to do the Teen Gift Drive, and we distribute those gifts to all the agencies in the area to get to the kids that need them. One of the needs that came out of the data that we have been working on for the last five years has been around the needs of children's mental health, both from the perspective of making sure that the workforce and the folks that are working with children have the best skills. There is a nationwide shortage of child psychiatrists, and many families that had kids suffering from depression, from ADHD, from anxiety, were having trouble accessing resources in our community, and many of the providers in our community didn't have the expertise to be able to treat these children. And so we hold trainings at South County Hospital with a grant that we obtained 10 times a year for primary care physicians, to train them on the best practices related to children's mental health needs and developmental issues. We hold dinner lectures and one, generally four times a year to educate even the, the larger professional community, so school folks and mental health providers, doctors, nurses. So those sessions are a much larger group. For the last three years, we've been video conferencing the sessions that we hold at South County Hospital with South Kingstown High School, so that school staff in South Kingstown can get this, oftentimes, the lectures that we bring in for these sessions come from Hasbro, Bradley, so that we're bringing the experts to our local community, and the school staff here are getting that training. We also video conference to other school districts as well, but we've done South Kingstown more than any other. We also, one of the needs that was identified through these discussions was that the best, one of the, one of the most frequent issues facing kids is child anxiety, and the best treatment for child anxiety is something called cognitive behavioral therapy. And yet, very few therapists in our community have the expertise to do CBT with children. It's, it's, it's a real art and skill to know how to adapt the techniques with children. And it's something that now, when you go to school, you're, you're very well-trained in it. When I was, when I trained 30 years ago, it wasn't around. So many practitioners who were very skilled in the community didn't have access to that training. So we organized a training that was held last fall. We partnered with Brown and URI to do the training. It occurred over a six-month time period, and our community now has 13 providers, one of whom was a social worker with the South Kingstown School Department that the coalition paid a scholarship for her, obtained a scholarship for her to be able to attend. We also have a school project that was funded by the United Way that we rolled out in South Kingstown and Westerly. Our project runs at Curtis Corner Middle School. We pay for an outreach worker to outreach kids that are falling, that are failing school. Sometimes there's a real need for better communication between the school and the family about what can be done, what services can we bring in to help support this child. And so we contract with an outreach worker, the coalition pays for it, to help facilitate these services. We have a consult team where the coalition brings in coalition members to help provide some expertise to the school staff, to try to help them figure out what they can do to, to help these kids. It was a real investment in the United Way to try something different in school communities to see how can we improve school success. And we really wanted to focus on kids with mental health needs because these are the kids that drop out of school and, you know, face many of the problems that you've heard about tonight. So that is an issue. One of the things that was also identified because of this project at Curtis Corner Middle was that a number of these kids that were in this project were victims of bullying. And so the coalition wrote a grant, and we had a medical student research the best programs around bullying, which ones have the, the best research behind them that are evidence-based, what does it take to really make a difference with bullying? The, the program that, one of the best programs that has the, the greatest amount of research behind it is actually a program out of Norway. It's called the Olveas Bullying Prevention Program. The coalition had the staff trained with nationally certified trainer, and just this morning, they rolled out this project to the students at Curtis Corner Middle School. And so the coalition's work is definitely impacting folks that live in South Kingstown as well as the rest of Washington County. That school project that I talked to you about is also rolling out in Westerly, and we hold collaborative office rounds in Westerly as well. We also do a project called Feeling Groovy, which is a project that is about emotional literacy and about teaching kids about feelings and expressing their feelings. And we roll this out in second grade classrooms throughout Washington County. There are 16 schools that are involved. Wakefield Elementary is participating this year, and I believe Mattoonik is as well. The book is read, it's called The Way I Feel, and then the children are invited to create, design for a bookmark, and one is printed from every school. And in May, which is Mental Health Month, we hold celebrations of feelings in every school. So anyway, our work is geared, again, at these, these big picture efforts. They are not, they're geared at all children and all families. I think one of, one of the things that we've also done that I think has a big impact is families were having a difficult time connecting with what the resources were for children's mental health were in the community. And so we have a website that has that directory online. And in, and in the last year, we've been developing brief podcasts for parents on different topics. So we have several on child anxiety because that was an issue that was identified. We have one on tics, some on ADHD, some on maternal depression. All of this can't, is done by one part-time person, me, and volunteers from the community. So your investment is really important. We exist totally on town appropriations, memberships, and some of you are members, and I'm grateful to you for being members, and grant writing. And it's really challenging to find funding, like the Washington County Regional Planning Council. You know, when you're doing big picture work, it's, and you're doing collaboration, it's something that everyone values because the results that you get are incredible, but nobody wants to pay for it. And it's really hard to find funding to, to pay for it because the needs of each individual case, you know, are so compelling. And, and that's typically what funders prefer to fund. So from the perspective of a member and also a coalition leader, perhaps you could chime in, Eileen?
Hello. I'm Eileen Stone, and I'm the coordinator for the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, and I do indeed sit on the advisory board of the Washington Children's Coalition. And one of the things that we're required in our grant, our Drug Free Community Grant, is that we collaborate with other agencies and whatnot. And I believe the collaboration first came about when the South County Physicians Initiative came together, and they were looking at the issue of mental health issues with children and substance abuse. And from that, the collaboration grew. I personally have taken part of the collaborative rounds at the hospital, and I sit there, and the wealth of information that comes out of those rooms, but the transfer of the information is the hardest part, to try and get it to the people and connect the dots to the people that matter. And then, and ultimately, support families is the hardest thing to do. And, and again, it's, it's being done all on, on grant money and volunteer efforts, and there is such a wealth of information. I took part of, of the two-day bullying conference, the Olveas. I know from my work, it is one of the best practices. It is evidence-based, it has application across the board in our district, and I think globally. I mean, they're rolling it out at Curtis Corner Middle School, but I immediately think district-wide. And bullying is one of those risk and protective factors that we also, we get involved with because of the stress and the anxiety that leads kids to get involved in substances and perhaps beh... and perhaps behaviors that could be curtailed if they're addressed properly. There's been, you know, I, just listening tonight, we are rich with people that really care and resources, but connecting those dots is the hardest thing to do, and we can't do that without some sort of funding. And, you know, I, it's been a privilege to be part of the Washington Children's Coalition, and the amount of energy that these people put in for the, for our community.
Does anybody have any questions?
Questions here at the table. Polly?
How long have you been going?
Ten years.
Ten years. And what is cognitive behavioral therapy?
Oh, it's hard to explain. It is evidence-based. It, it's really about changing your thoughts. You have to change your thoughts to change your behavior.
I'm sure it's much more complicated.
It is.
That was a simple question.
Carol?
Sue and Eileen. Sorry, did I? Okay. The bullying program, is that gonna be something they're gonna teach in, like, health, or do you have any idea how that's gonna be implemented with the kids at Curtis Corner?
Well, the, the way it began today with an assembly and a discussion, there are rules that are being, school rules that are being implemented, and then there will be discussions that will happen in their advisory period to help keep reinforcing the lessons and the rules. The staff have been trained so that if there is a bullying incident, they know how to deal with it. And, you know, one of the, one of the things, you know, I think many of us were, grew up with was that, you know, there isn't much you can do about bullying, best to, you know, ignore it. And some, many people believe, you know, it's sort of a rite of passage that you just have to get through. You know, what we're seeing now in this day and age, especially with Facebook, that these things don't go away, and that the impulsivity, the access to the internet, it carries on at home, and some kids are being bullied in their bedrooms when we think they're being safe at home. And so, you know, it's important that we, as a community, address it, and there are things that we can do, and it's important that kids know that something is going to happen, that it is going to be addressed, and that everywhere, we reinforce, you know, basic respect for one another and how that feels and, and, and how we need to relate to one another.
I need to speak to something about the bullying program. From a prevention standpoint, one of the things that we look at today, we don't look at programs anymore. What we're taught to look at is what they call environmental strategies. And the Olveius program is the only environmental strategy bullying program out there. It is, an environmental strategy in many ways is nothing more than a good business plan. There are seven strategies that you have to look at. Are you changing norms? Are you educating the population? Are you bringing the community into your, into your discussion? Are you inviting them in? Are you changing physical design of an area where perhaps bullying might take place? Those are the types of things, and it is the only evidence-based program out there. It's very, very popular in other states of New England, but South Kingstown is, through the Washington Children's Coalition, the first
In the state to implement this?
To implement this program. And one of the other things that I particularly liked best about it is they do teacher training that actually get everyone speaking the same language, so they learn how to address the bully and address the person that's been offended. You know, and the whole core, the whole thing is to get the kids that are basically standing by to shift more towards a sense of empathy towards the person who's been offended. So there, it's, it's very, very, and it's all done by meetings in the classroom, so it's not like a program or a health curriculum-type thing. It has a, a sort of a community-type base to it.
It's really about changing the culture. And we, as a Coalition, need to think about how we begin to roll out the supports in the community beyond the school. Because, because it, it would be wonderful if all of the coaches in town could get through it, so that if
Bus drivers.
Right. So that anyone that touches a kid that witnesses this kind of thing would have the same reaction, so that, so that kids are learning this is not okay.
Kathy?
Could you just spell Olveius?
It's O-L-W-E-U-S, but it's pronounced Olveius, like O-L-V-A-Y-U-S. He's Norwegian.
Oh, that explains it.
Yes. And he, he began this research thirty years ago, and it's, it's really fascinating. And, you know, in light of, you know, the recent suicides related to bullying, you know, it's an issue that we need to take on.
Absolutely. So Scott, Scott Mueller was mentioning something. I was in a meeting Saturday, and he was mentioning about it, and it's something that we have to take on. And I appreciate your enthusiasm, both you and Eileen, and the work that you've done to get this, get this rolling. When I get home, since I really haven't seen my daughter, I'm gonna ask her about this.
How the assembly was today.
Exactly. I was, yeah, it, it made my day. Well, thank you. Thank you for doing that. My daughter will benefit from it.
Jim?
As of right now, who will reach out to you? A brave enough, enough student or a witness? If a parent can't figure it out, if a teacher's staff can't figure out, how do you reach that kid? Now, I know you're trying to bridge it now with this education, but you know, I keep reading all these articles that finally someone graduates from high school, and they just tell you the horror they went through five years ago. So how, who's reaching out to you now? Who's brave enough to step to the plate? I've been bullied. Who's the enabler? Who's the, how do you get those folks to step to the plate without being frightened to death?
Well, I think that's what these advisory periods are gonna do. They're gonna, they're gonna build that support in, and they're gonna have these discussions. And there was a great, there was a great clip today in the, in the assembly. They used a video clip, and I, I, I loved it. It was, there wasn't very much a dialogue in it, but in thirty seconds, it sort of showed how someone can move from just a witness to being a supporter of the person being bullied. It showed a group of kids passing by this boy on this bicycle, and they were, you know, saying names to him, and he was obviously embarrassed, and he was sort of, you know, hiding his head, tucking his head down into his coat. And you saw this other kid watching this interaction. And then the next day, the same thing is happening, and this kid had red hair. And the next day, the same group of kids is coming by, and this kid that was nearby pulled down his sweatshirt hood, and he had dyed his hair red as sort of an act of support of this other kid. And these kids stopped saying what they were saying. And it was, and so, it's a process, and it's a culture change, and it's gonna take time, it's gonna take lots of support, it's gonna take lots of discussion to change behavior. And it's gonna take a lot of work, and it's not something that changes overnight, but we have to start somewhere. So.
Do, just to follow up, do parents recognize that maybe they've got a problem with a child? Can they, are parents good at recognizing, or they refuse to admit that they've got a bully?
Well, part of the Olveius program is, is there's a whole, it's a very scripted-type thing, and first of all, the teachers are trained to start identifying bullying, and then they're, they're trained in their class meetings to bring up what is bullying and educating the kids. So as far as, like, it doesn't call people forward, per se, but it, it gives them the, the time to role-play. But in the program, when we did the training, they actually did role-playing with bringing parents in. Some parents will listen and some won't, but the whole point is that the community is not gonna turn away from it.
Good. Thank you.
Further questions here at the table?
If I can just further elaborate, Jim. Advisory period is a certain portion of the time during the school day that's now mandated by state law. So this is a program that's been purchased to be implemented during that advisory period. I have Googled Dr. Olveius. It's, it's a wonderful program. We've talked about it at the Partnership for Prevention meetings, and kudos, you know, for moving this program forward. Further questions here at the table? Thank you for all of your efforts, both Sue and Eileen.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move back to
Steve, am I next?
What's that?
Am I next? Neighborhood revitalization.
Leslie, if you wanna be next, you're gonna be next.
I'll be back.
Let me set the stage. We're going back to the municipal and outside agency supports.
Oh, with the outside agency?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know where we were on these papers.
You are one of the insiders, but they call you an outside agency, Leslie. The outside agencies, the, what I have up on the board is on page GF twenty-five, and the narrative is on N thirty-nine. Conservation Commission, eight hundred and fifty dollars. All of these agencies, it's all flat funding that's been recommended. So if there's folks from any of the agencies, they certainly can come forward. Narrow River Preservation, they requested twenty-seven hundred, flat funding of five hundred dollars. Chamber Commerce, we've dealt with. The Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization, is there somebody here from that organization?
Well, that would be me. How can I possibly go after all of these people? I know.
We trust you can do it. Welcome.
Leslie Schwinnad, President of Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization. You know, I was, as I was listening to all these people, and I'm sure you had the same reaction, I thought, where would this town be with all, all these people and these agencies? I was dumbfounded, actually. What can I say about Peacedale Revitalization? Well, first of all, I do, I'm gonna sound like the Academy Awards here, but I do wanna thank you people. You're always very supportive, you're always everything that we sponsor. My guiding angel is sitting there, Andy Nada. If it wasn't for Andy, I don't know where we would be. Andy, and I think Chief Espia, Jeff Allen, John Shock, I'm naming all the municipality here, but they have been so supportive, and Steve has too. To Peacedale Revitalization, it would not exist without the town. I have never called anybody in the town where I didn't get a response right away and I didn't get action taken right away. And that includes Steve and Andy, my, my right-hand person. I know we're not gonna get a lot of money, although I thought I was gonna get an open check because I didn't see my name anywhere, so I, but we are applying for a grant again. My team, including Andy, we are, we are, should I, I don't even know if I should save the grant. Should I not save the grant? Okay, well, anyway, we're applying for a big grant. And we've been working on it, we've been working on it for a couple of weeks now, probably a month or more. None of us are grant writers, so this is gonna be miracle of miracles. However, we just became a 501(c)(3), and I can tell you that the lawyer that was helping us thought it was a miracle. We thought we were gonna have to go back for years and, and do a lot of things, but we didn't, so somebody was watching out for us. Becoming a 501(c)(3) is gonna allow us to go for other things. And right now, we have a lot of work to do in Peacedale. We still have a lot of work. Now that we're a 501(c)(3), we will be collaborating with other, other agencies. I have been talking with Jean Johnson of House of Hope, and we're just trying to see what other improvements we can make in the village. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for the, the grant that we might, that we, we hopefully will get. We won't know until July, though, so we can't bring out the champagne until that time, but we, we're hopeful that we'll get it. I think that's all I have to say because all these people stole all the thunder, they had all these great things going on, so. Any questions?
Questions here at the table?
Yes, Kathy.
You've got great things going on, that's all.
Well, we do, we do. We, yeah.
And really, what you've done with the, with the Christmas tree and the new lights on there, and that you just shut it off, really, it's nice to go by and still see the lights on. I enjoy it, but Leslie, you've done a great job, everybody who's, who's on.
Well, again, we've had a lot of support, and we've had a lot of support for you people. Every time we do something, you're there. You know that we're working with the public housing curb, the public housing people, the groups, we're, we're doing a lot of collaboration with them just to erase the stigma of, stigma of public housing in our community, and I think you've all been a part of that. And so, again, a lot of people don't even know that we have some of the public housing, like Champagne Heights and Fournier Estates, because they look so good, and the people are so involved up there. So that's one of the things that we've tried to do in Peacedale, is erase that stigma of public housing, and, and we're doing a good job, and these people sit on our boards, and one of them is great with computers, is helping us, Jane Sherman is helping us with our, our grant as far as the electronic, doing this thing electronically. I'm lucky I can turn on a computer, but I have the right people behind me, so this is a good thing. So anyway, thank you all for, you know, for helping us, and again, to Andy and, and all these other people. Today, Vin Murray wrote us something, a little testimonial. Susan Gostadis did, that we're gonna submit into the grant, and I, Jeff Allen is gonna write us something, and the chief's out there. So I didn't ask the chief because he's busy, but Jeff is, Jeff is busy too, but he, he said he would do it. So, any other questions?
I just wanna say it looks great. Leslie, you've done a great job. The artwork, the, you know, the benches, and now the new park over across from De Vosy.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be our pocket park, and if we get the grant, we're gonna do something with that. And it is my intention, or the group's intention, when we know exactly who, you know, who bought the mill or something, we'll be meeting with these people too, and to get more people involved in, in our process. And, yeah, we're gonna be doing a lot of beautification things, and then whatever other grants that we can go for. Hopefully, we'll get this one as a start, and that, that'll be good.
When do you hope to start on the park? Do you have any?
When we have the money.
When you have the money. Good answer.
As soon as we have the money, Carol, and I'm hoping that we'll get it, we will start on the park. And we have plans in, in our heads, and, you know, Andy's been helping us with, with some mapping and things like that. So we do have the plan, and it's, it's just a question of money. And I know that we're gonna be getting a big check from the town, but that's, you know, we're, we're, that's why we're going, that's why we went for the 501(c)(3). We, we really wanna be independent, and I think that's always been Steve's goal, to get some of the, especially our organization, and that was my goal when I became president, become a 501(c)(3), to go after some of these things, especially now because revitalization happens to be the thing, so we wanna get on that bandwagon, so, because we wanna be the next thing, you know, so. Anything else?
I just wanna say thank you, Leslie. You are definitely a gift to our community.
Well, thank you, Ella, and so are all you people. As I said, you people are very supportive, you're always there when we need you. I can pick up the phone anytime and call any one of you. And I think that's probably something that, and I certainly am not, you know, trying to buddy you up for the big check that we're getting, but I think people don't realize in South Kingstown what we have. I mean, today, I think a lot of politicians and municipal workers and teachers take it on the chin. And I think when you have to deal with people in the town, I have never had a problem dealing with anybody in the town, they have been a hundred percent supportive, and I think that, in my estimation, the municipal employees that we have, town council members that we have, and the teachers that we have are worth every penny that we're paying for them. I know you people are getting big checks, but we, that was a joke. If anybody's listening, it's a joke, they don't get paid. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. No, thanks.
Leslie didn't mention that we've also got her to volunteer as our shelter manager when we have to open up an emergency shelter.
That's right. Vin and I, we, we work on this together.
You shouldn't wear your shirt tonight, Leslie.
That's right. He got us shirts too for this, yeah.
Right.
Next agency is Washington County Regional Planning. They requested six thousand dollars. The recommendation was level funding at the twenty-five hundred. Next is the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, four thousand dollars, level funding. And Eileen is, is here.
Again. Well, I wanna thank you for your donation, and I'll tell you a little bit about what's happening with the South Kingstown Partnership. We are presently writing for our drug-free grant. We're in year five of drug, our Drug-Free Community Grant, and we have to complete, compete competitively again for year six through ten. And so we're in the process of doing, in fact, it's due next And so we're in the process of doing, in fact, it's due next week. So we've been very, very busy, but the partnership, I had to input a significant amount of data into what they call a workstation, and as I was going through, they cap it at 31, and I kept going and going, because we have had such collaborative efforts with the people in this community. And it's really a testament to what drug-free community dollars can do. Some of you have heard the story that I had told about, in September, we got a phone call from an ad agency in Washington, DC. Excuse me. And I didn't understand what they were asking us for, but ultimately, they were flying us down to Washington, DC to be part of this media campaign called Above the Influence. It wasn't until I got down there that I realized we were only one of 20 communities chosen across the United States to participate in this. And what they were asking us to do was to work on the Above the Influence National Media Campaign on a local level. They had rolled it out in three places across the United States. The Bronx, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Portland, Oregon. And basically, what Above the Influence is, is it is a media campaign that counters all the negative drug advertising that the kids get on a daily basis. Above the Influence is recognized by our youth, just like Coca-Cola and Burger King are recognized by us. I wasn't as familiar with it. They advertise only on MTV, USA, all the, they do a tremendous amount of market research. So what I understood when we got down there was, is that, you know, we're part of a media, Providence is a media area, Washington is a media area, Hartford is. So we were one of 20 communities, and we were also asked to participate in a national evaluation, which they were hesitating to ask us, because we were a school system, and it's very difficult to get a school system buy-in. I got on the telephone at the airport, because we had like 24 hours to let them know whether we could be part of this. And I was shocked. Within 24 hours, I had approval from the principals, student assistants, school committee chair, superintendent, and everyone willing to participate in this. And we launched the campaign, and I was called down to Washington twice to present our data from the kids within our community. And we also were able to do the campaign in Proust as well. So it was a way to integrate both the students from a private school and a public school. And basically, what the kids did was a tagged activity, and what they were portraying was what they are above the influence of. And it could have been anything. It could have been drugs, alcohol, you know, image copying other people, peer pressure. It was incredibly, you know, the imagination that these kids had, you know, was blacking out. I'm above the influence. And so, anyway, that's what Drug-Free Community Dollars will do. It builds that kind of collaboration, that within a 24-hour period, I could get the kind of approval that I did with our stakeholders. So that's, you know, some of the things that we're doing. So we are writing for our year six through 10 grant. It is going to be incredibly competitive with the congressional cuts that they're making. We've also just written for another grant with the state, focusing on the reduction of marijuana. Rhode Island is fifth in the nation with marijuana usage across the board, and number one in the age group between 12 and 17. So there's block grant dollars out there, and we'll be issuing eight grants, and we've just written for a grant for that and submitted, and we won't know until the end of spring. And of course, then, we had last night's message by the governor about cutting the services, so we can expect a cut there as well. So the funding that we get from the town, the support that we get from the town, is very, very much appreciated. And I can't thank Andy enough. I mean, he's my person that I call for wisdom guidance, and Steve and Frank, Xavier, they're just fabulous. And I just can't thank you guys enough for your support of what we do. So, thank you.
Questions here at the table?
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Eileen. You know, we have a meeting tomorrow. Monthly meetings, and welcome all the town councils. 4:30 to 6:30, four o'clock, yeah. And which Thursday is it? The second or the third?
Second Thursday of the month.
Second Thursday of the month. So there is a meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Carol, sorry.
Sorry, Eileen.
That's okay.
I just wanted to ask you about the Access to Excellence. Have you got any data back on that yet?
We have, we've done the surveys. Access to Excellence is the chemical health, new chemical health policy that we wrote for the athletes at South Kingstown High School. And part of what we were doing was surveying the students. This is the first year that we are rolling it out. So we have survey material for fall students and winter, for the winter, fall sports and winter sports. So we're compiling the data, and the sort of, it's a baseline of perception of use among athletes and whatnot. I think, in part, because we took a long time working on the committee to roll this out. We just had a meeting today, because we're looking to look at doing it in the middle school, you know, developmentally appropriate in the middle school. And they were speaking that the kids got it, a number, the infractions. And they hear things. They're not hearing as much as they have been. I know when we were doing the Above the Influence campaign, the kids spoke frequently about the access to excellence and what that meant to them. So as far as from a violation standpoint, certainly there have been a couple of violations, but not anything significant. And I do know that it has been tested in other communities, and parents went to court, and the judge upheld the code.
It seemed like, you know, we haven't heard too much about violations of it, at least I haven't.
No, neither have I.
Well, it must be working, then, right?
Well, and I think, I think Dr. Stringfellow was very smart when she, she was just coming on board when we were introducing this, but what she said is, we need to educate the community first before we implement a new policy. And so we spent that whole year, we had brought in speakers, and we did a mandatory parent meeting and whatnot, before we ever rolled out the policy, and I think that made a big difference. And certainly controversy makes difference, too. And it raises the level of understanding what prevention is, and the real facts do come out, you know, because I think there's a lot of misinformation sometimes, or assumptions that can be made that may or may not be accurate. So I think the dialogue is good. It's good for prevention, anyway.
I thought it was a great program to roll out, and like, always have said, that prevention is something that's very hard to measure. You can't see who you've saved, or... But with that program, obviously, you're just seeing less violations, and you're hearing less, and hopefully, it will continue to be, keep these kids on the straight and narrow.
And the other thing I think that's really important, that maybe the community doesn't know, is that it was really a community effort. It wasn't just prevention in the school. It was, I mean, I can't say enough about our law enforcement getting involved, and, you know, on these, I mean, they have, and quite honestly, they've given the partnership incredible credibility over the years with their community policing and their prevention efforts, and they were involved in this. School committee was involved. The superintendent was involved. We had parents involved. I mean, you know, it's hard to bring people in sometimes, but our community owned this, and I think it was a very important endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next agency is the Downtown Merchants Association. Justin, you've been very patient.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Justin Galant. I own a pure pizza company, also a member of the Downtown Merchants Group. Excuse my attire. I was at the shop. I got a call about, or a text message about an hour before about the meeting. Brickley's open today, so we're all a little bit busy on the block, which was good. A sign of spring is coming, I suppose, even though it's 20, 23 degrees outside. The Downtown Merchants, I don't know how familiar you guys are. We've kind of had ups and downs over the last, you know, two decades. But most recently, in the past year, Chick Gavitt from Ichiban Karate really reformed the group and brought together a lot of the downtown businesses. Our focus is, you know, we want the whole town to prosper. We want South Kingstown to prosper. We want Washington County to prosper. But for us, really, the focus is downtown, and the village of downtown Wakefield. We, you know, we put on, you know, what we've called block parties in the past. We're kind of changing the name a little and referring to them more as street festivals, where we're not blocking off the roads any longer. However, the police department has helped us out with officers being in the area during our events. But, and it's tough to come here before the town council and ask for money, when, I mean, there's no doubt what we're asking for is, I guess, more of a fun thing. And there are so many agencies out there right now that need money for just basic needs. At the same time, I guess I would, I would then also like to point out that the Downtown Merchants do try to work with almost all of the agencies that have presented by doing coat drives, food drives. Most of our events, we have several of the agencies participate free of charge to bring awareness about. But our group really tries to strive to bring people to downtown, to have people walk around, to, you know, beautify Main Street, to, and everything, and the town has helped a lot. You know, everybody talks about Steve and Andy, and I should probably do that as well. I better, right? But, I mean, everything, I mean, we've partnered with the town recently. We're getting ready. Anybody that's been on Main Street knows that, you know, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but probably the realistic speed is, you know, 35 and higher. The police department does their best to try to slow people down, and we appreciate that. One of the things we've just, we're getting ready to roll out is, in several of the crosswalks now, the merchants will, and we chipped in to pay for these as well. The Downtown Merchants did, but we're going to start having, and I don't know what, cones, is it the best description for them, Andy? To just kind of remind people that are driving, and we all are busy, and we're all doing other things. Sometimes when we're in the car, and our mind's not completely focused on where it should be at the time, but particularly on Main Street with the kids and all the people, you know, to hopefully, you know, slow people down a little bit on Main Street. But, you know, we, another issue on Main Street right now is some of the holiday decorations. Over the past, and I think there are wreaths that get hung up every year. I think they're like 20 years old, and they're falling apart, the holiday wreaths. There, you know, there are, you know, if you look at the telephone poles and the light poles that are there, there are some brackets there that are rusting, and they're falling apart. So the Downtown Merchants, with, you know, whatever help we can get from the town, we're going to attempt over the next year to really kind of clean that aspect of it up. And it's a lot of it. Right now, it's, I mean, there isn't, there isn't a paid director or anything like that. This is all voluntary. All of the members, we meet once a month. We're going to meet next Monday at a different business to discuss what we can do to help clean up downtown. And so, I mean, I think we asked for a lot to try to help with a banner program. We understand, you know, the way the economy is now, the way the money is now, it's not there. So whatever you guys can do to help out, we appreciate it. I think we, you know, Mr. Alfred put through $1,000. That'd be great if you could help. It costs several thousand dollars every time we do a street festival. As a business owner, I can attest that, yes, there are hundreds and hundreds of people down there. Business-wise, believe it or not, and Ella, I've seen you there, and Kathy, I've seen you there, and I've seen some of you guys. Business-wise, I don't, my business doesn't change that day. It's the same business. We sell slices of pizza. We're not taking deliveries to homes, but we have people coming in for single slices of pizza. At $2 a piece, it's, you know, it's a lot of pizza to sell. So, but it's more, again, it's a community thing, and it's building the community, and it's fun, and it's, people always have a smile on their face, and it's something for the people to do. And so that's why we appreciate it. And again, it's all paid for by the merchants, with the exception of the $1,000, I guess, that we're looking for. Any questions?
Questions here at the table? Carol?
Justin, how many festivals do you approximately have yet? Do you know?
There are two, that the Downtown Merchants actually organize themselves. There are two really main ones that occur of the Downtown Merchants, and that is, there's one in June to kind of kick off summer, and then there's one in the fall, focused around Halloween, a fall festival. The one in June, Paul Massey's great. They give us, they clear their parking lot for us. And again, in the past, we used to block off the road. We're not doing that any longer. I think it irritated some people that weren't going to the festival. But Paul Massey, by clearing out their lot, they've provided a place for us to have a band to play. All the shops kind of come out onto the sidewalk. Again, the police department has been great by kind of focusing some of the, some of their officers down onto Main Street a little more frequently during that. And again, it's a great time. There are some other events that happen where the Downtown Merchants participate in, but the Downtown Merchants as a group don't necessarily do. We have Ladies Night, and that's put on mainly by Purple Cow and other people contribute.
You did the Halloween one, right?
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were definitely involved in that. That was, and that was fun.
That was very good. That was wonderful.
I think we were a little overwhelmed by the, you know, 250 or 300 kids that were dressed up in costumes.
That was really nice.
Adults.
I was a little shocked to see somebody actually brought a pony. So that was, that was neat. It was a real pony. Nobody dressed up.
That was the first time you did that, right?
That was the first time, and so, you know, I think going forward, I think we'll be a little more organized with that one. But, you know, again, a parade through town, and it was fun. Kids had a blast, and it was nice. There is also, in the middle of the summer, the Contemporary Theater Company is putting on an arts festival that I believe they use the field over by Wakefield Elementary School, and they get a tent from Liberty Rentals, and they do a big arts, and put on some, put on a play. And, you know, again, it's that community feel. But that's, now, he works with us, and we do a lot to help him, but, you know, my, you know, I really help with the June event, and after that, I'm too tired. Any other questions?
I just want to comment with Justin, who's also a new member of the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. And a lot of the fundraisers that I've attended over the, you know, multiple years, there have been very generous donations from the Downtown Merchants with raffles. I know that there is pizza that will be supplied for the South Kingstown junior class, post-prom activity. So the list goes on and on and on with a lot of the businesses from the Downtown Merchants. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
That concludes the agency's funding requests. We now need to move into the public safety. So Chief Jackie, could you come up? First budget is on page N 20, and GF 11 is the detail. The narrative on the police department provides detail as to the size and the scope of the department at this time. Right now, the complement is a full Right now, the complement is a full 70, full-time department members. 52 are sworn officers, including the chief. Eight are dispatches, and 10 are civilians that work within the facility. Personnel-wise, the salary increases for all department membership is anticipated at 2.25% based on the labor contracts or based on negotiation with the supervisory people. The page N21 also provides a description as to the performance measures the department looks at. First, looking at the department's size, where officers are assigned. I think it's also important to note that we still are maintaining since May of 2007, the school resource officer at the high school. That is not paid for through the school department, but rather through the police department in its entirety. That has been an effective program for us. It's one that the schools like. It's also one that's worked well for the department to be able to be proactive in dealing with issues before they become serious issues at that school. We also have a detective bureau with a juvenile officer that spends a considerable amount of time going back and forth between the public safety facility, as well as a couple of our school buildings. The town is also looking at what the dispatch requirements are within the department. As you can see, about 95% of the traffic through is looking at police department-type calls, or fire-related, and about 6% is in the EMS area. How chief ends up with 120%, I'm not sure, but I guess they work quite hard. The other information that's there, I think, is detail. I did want to mention the number of police vehicles that we have. As noted there, there's 13 police vehicles, and all of those units are equipped with AEDs. We also operate with two vehicles that are four-wheel drive. Within that department, there's also an additional two four-wheel drives that are within the public safety function that are used during snow emergencies for patrol purposes. Two of those 13 vehicles are also used on a rental basis, where we will lease those out to various road construction jobs. We collect a fee on that. So once a vehicle starts to get to its, close to its end of life, that vehicle then becomes the traffic safety vehicle. It's used either by our patrol officers on a third-party contract, or with the constables when we don't have a police officer available. Page N22 provides information as far as the budget's concerned. We are seeing a major increase in the full-time salary account, not because of the 2.25% salary increase, but because the police department has, for patrol officers, a step plan. It's a five-step plan, and we have, I believe it's nine officers, Jackie, that are moving through that step plan, that in addition to the 2.25% COLAR increase. The overall increase on the personnel is about 4.97% as a result of those changes, both with that, as well as changes within the longevity schedule that were approved in the last contract that was negotiated. Excluding the labor costs, we really have, and are seeing declines or reductions in many of the accounts that are for the general operating expenses associated with the department. Those are highlighted on page N22. With that, as a general introduction, I'd ask the chief if there's specific commentary that you'd like to provide, or if there's questions from the council.
No, I'd just like to thank the town council for the ever-ending support for the police department. This budget allows us to operate at the level that we have been operating. It's been my management style, because I know the town manager has a big red pencil, not to go in with any fat on the budget, but this budget, as presented, allows us to maintain the level of service that we're happy to provide. So I want to thank the council for their support in that regard. I'm proud of our police department. I've been around a little while, and I interact with police chiefs throughout the country. I sit on a couple of national committees, and I just came back from a mini-conference, and I hear, I hear police chiefs speaking about the issues within their department. And I don't identify those issues only because of the support that we've always received from both the town administration and the town council. So I, for one, understand the importance of that type of support when I look at my counterparts throughout the country. So thank you so much for your continued support. With that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions here at the table? Kathy?
Chief, I know we've invested a lot with the communications, radios, and the system inside the police station. I'm just wondering your thoughts. Is everything working smoothly? I know over the past couple of years of the budgets we've been adding on, and just to get your take on what we've done as far as updating. I know a lot of it had to do with homeland security-type changes, but we have invested a lot, and it's good just to hear, you know, what the town is paying for and getting for.
We haven't identified any major problems. It has been working smoothly. With any new system, there are some kinks, but the kinks have been worked out very easily. And we're really pleased. And here again, that's through the support of some grants and with the support of the council. And I don't know if any of the council has seen the new configuration of the dispatch area, but you're certainly
I wondered about it, actually.
Yeah, you're certainly welcome to come out. I'd love to show it to you. It really is state-of-the-art. And we are continually, and I get calls from police chiefs all over the Northeast asking for the, asking for the specifics of what we did in dispatch, as well as the police station itself. And now it's 11 years old. So we really have a state-of-the-art facility.
I would like to see him. Someday when I come up, few extra minutes, I'll
Come on over.
Pop in and see you.
Come on over.
We should have a meeting. Yeah, we should have a meeting. We haven't had a meeting, and then the room upstairs, the nice one.
Yeah. Well, that's another thing. The community room downstairs is almost always used. Matter of fact, when I have a meeting or get together, I've got a reserve weeks ahead of time. And then the upstairs conference room is a beautiful room, and that's utilized quite often too, by appointment.
We can't even get in, so let's
I can't get in there, so I don't know how you
Carol.
Chief, I was looking at the number of calls at South Kingston High School for the SRO officer.
Right.
Is that high, 275? I mean, it's, I'm sure they're actual. I'm not suggesting that, but I mean, that seems like a lot of
I wouldn't characterize it as high. A lot of them are routine calls, where we go to transport the young student home who may be ill or something like that.
Oh, I see.
They're not
So it's not all
They're not necessarily
Bad behavior.
That doesn't necessarily denote problem calls.
Okay.
A lot of them are service calls.
Questions here at the table? Jim?
Chief, if there were more dollars available, where would be the first place you'd spend them?
We're down a couple of offices, and because of that, we constantly monitor the overtime. Matter of fact, last week, we made some schedule changes to compensate for some overtime that we saw because of the alignment of the shift. So if money were available, I would probably recommend, through the town manager, the hiring of new officers. And that may come, that may come in accordance with our review and overview of the overtime issues.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I would agree with the chief on that, because right now, the overtime is getting to a point where we may be better off looking at an additional officer. But one of the other problems that we have is the length of disability that some of the officers that we have on staff at this point that are unavailable. So when you operate two offices down, and you've got two that are down with disability, the overtime starts to crop up. The question is, where is that balance? So what we have been doing is, on a, probably about every three months, is to take a look at what the staffing levels are, and to take some serious questions on whether or not we're better off on the overtime or not. But this budget with the, for public safety, and the budget with the highway services, is probably as close to what bottom line can be. And in fact, as I said to you last night, if we had to do it over, and we knew today, what we know, knew in December what we know today, particularly as far as what gas and electric prices are going to be 18 months in the future, I think that we would have probably have seen additional dollars being warranted to be put into those accounts. We can live with the budget as it is, but it's going to be very, very tight. We do maintain a contingency account, which may be something that we would have to look at for operational transfers if the gas really gets out of hand, because that's one of the major cost drivers outside of salary in this department. So I agree that we are as tight as we can be. I mean, at one time, our full complement of uniforms was up to
55.
55, and we're at 52 now. So you drop three, and plus you have the two out on disability at this point, and you've got one on military
Right.
At this point. So you've got less of a staff, plus during the school year, we've got the resource officer at the high school. So there's some real tightness in that budget at this point.
Steve, is the gasoline cost, fuel cost in here?
It's in there at $3 a gallon, based on the actual gallons that they use. It would be in the 300 series, or it would be the account 307.
307? Okay. And that's at $3 a gallon?
Right.
That's the problem when we did
Yeah. I know.
We did the budget in December, you know, and we were figuring $3 a gallon. Now, what is it now, $3.30?
I thought we were producing enough corn and ethanol for you in the tunic.
Yeah. My cars, I don't think my cars are going to run on ethanol.
No. We're going to get the bicycles out this summer, though, right?
Yeah, we have bicycle patrol. We may increase those.
I mean, if you see the chief on a bicycle next year, you'll understand why.
No.
You'd love to see it, wouldn't you?
I would pedal and buy them. Everybody else will be on their bikes, too.
Chief, how many of those units that we see on the side of the road now, they're warning motorists how fast they're going? Are those ours? We borrow them from the state? You know, the speed warnings?
Oh, yeah, those are, that's from a grant from the state.
But they're ours, or they're leased?
Yeah, they're ours.
How many do we have?
We have two.
Two?
Yeah. They're tough to keep working, keep running simultaneously, but, you know, they have a tendency to break down, the batteries die out. But we do have two, and we're going to deploy them as soon as practical. In the wintertime, it's tough with the snow and the snow plowing, as you can well imagine.
Oh, it's just battery run? Or is it solar?
Yeah, well
LEDs.
LEDs. I'm sorry. I'm still on batteries.
What I'm saying, there's a malfunction quite often, and we're on top of it. We have a police officer trained, really, in repairing them, but they're problematic.
All right.
Carol?
Chief, how many employees do you have to have on at any given time? I know, like, at night, you probably have less than
Yeah, we have minimum manning, minimum manning, five patrol officers. With the exception of Thursday evening, or Thursday at 3:00 through Sunday morning at 7:00, we have six. So that's minimum manning requirements. But that is adequate. That is
That would be in the off-hours, the minimum requirement? Or is that always? I mean, that's
That's minimum manning always, yeah.
Do you usually have more than that on duty, like, during the day?
Yes, often, often we have more than that, especially in the second shift. But we have the ability, or we allow three officers off at any given time. If you have sick calls, people calling sick, and we drop below the minimum, then it becomes an automatic fill by contract, and that's where the overtime comes in.
Chief, I just have a few questions. I know last year or the year before, I believe that you spoke about evidence, storage space. So is that still maintaining itself, or is that in need?
Well, that was part of the CIP initiative that we talked about some years ago, actually building a separate building on the premises for storage and evidence processing. I'll tell you quite candidly now, that would be a luxury. Would I love to have it, yes. I don't see a, I don't feel a yawn cry, a great necessity now, especially in this economy. We recently, as a matter of fact, we took delivery just this week of some equipment. We're going to establish a evidence processing room in the bottom level, the basement of our, of our police department. And I think that's going to go a long way to relieve that situation. The building was also, and beside storage, it was going to be evidence processing with this new facility that we're now putting together in the basement. I think that'll relieve that problem. So I don't see an overall need or immediate need for a new building.
Right. And the second question that I have, I heard out in the community the other day that we have some people who are going through the police academy. So how does that work? Does the town pay for that, or is that
When we send a police officer to the police academy?
Right.
No, we give them an offer of employment, and we send them at our cost to the police academy.
Okay. And is that, and I believe it's a year, but the people enrolled in the police academy now, or entering the police academy, is that to fulfill a spot for the future? I noticed there's three retirements? Or is that to backfill some, you know, staff that we need in the past?
If I understand you correctly, when we recruit, we establish a hiring list of 10, and that list stays in effect for about a year, a year. And we draw from that when we're going to hire, what we need to hire, when we can hire. The academy lasts anywhere from 14 to 20 weeks, depending on the curriculum. Sometimes they add some courses. Once a patrol officer finishes the academy, they enter a 12-week, what we call a field training program. So it takes about eight months, once a patrol officer graduates from the school, to actually use them as a full-service police officer. But every, every police officer who attends the academy is sponsored by a police department. As a matter of fact, we have one recruit in the municipal academy right now, and it's a female, and she's an excellent, excellent candidate. We're very high, very high on her. She will graduate in May and probably not be a full-service officer going through the field training program until maybe August, August. So
This is why I'm bringing it up.
Do you know, do you know our
Phenomenal.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because
Phenomenal.
Because she's 21 years of age, and I was concerned, as we all were, with the maturity of a 21-year-old candidate. This lady, or this recruit, displayed a phenomenal amount of maturity, so much so that you couldn't deny her the position. I mean, she, in every aspect of the process, she shined. I'm very high on her, and I think it's a marvelous, she will be a marvelous addition to the police department. I can't wait for her to graduate.
I couldn't agree with you more. I believe she's a graduate of South Kingston High School, the class of 2007. And I heard that the other day, and it was the nicest thing that I had heard all day.
That's a very fair assessment of her. She's something special. I can't wait for you to meet her when we square her in.
How many women officers do you have?
Seven, including her.
How are the new cameras in the cell block working out? Didn't you get those not too long ago?
The new
The new cameras in the cell block?
Oh, that was part of our program. It's excellent. There are no blind spots. That was what we were concerned about, blind spots in the cell block, so that we can constantly monitor what's going on in there, but they're working perfectly.
Good.
Ella?
Jim?
Yeah, chief, what happens, especially late at night Yeah, chief, what happens, especially late at night, if there's an accident on a main highway? I don't know how many responders we'll have, but who covers our perimeter? Do we have agreements with Narragansett?
Yes, we have mutual aid agreements-
Okay, mutual aid.
On serious accidents where it's necessary for us to have four or five police officers on the scene, both to investigate and direct traffic, we have mutual aid agreements with the neighboring departments and the state police. You know, you know, one of the things that, that happens, and it's, it's quite nice to see, really, sometimes truckers will come by, people who drive trucks for a living, they would actually stop and put out flares, help police officers with the measurements. So there's, there's plenty of, plenty of help whenever there's a serious accident.
I'm looking through the, the police department budget, and I'm trying to, where do guns and supplies like that, what, what item is that?
Three-twenty-five.
Three-twenty-five?
The purchase of guns would be in the four-hundred series. If there was guns being purchased, it would be in the four-hundred series. The ammunition that would be used for the, for the guns is in the three-hundred series.
Three-twenty-five?
Under the three-twenty-five. There's no guns that are being purchased this year?
No, no, no. We, we issue a pistol called a Sig Sauer, and, you know, once you, they last a lifetime, you know, and they're very well cared for, that's a requirement, and they're inspected on a regular basis, so.
Well, sometimes it's hard to find these items, because you call it something else, you know? I figured it was in there somewhere.
Under MO.
It's hard not to call a gun a gun.
Yeah.
Further questions?
If we move on with the, the next account is the animal control program. Animal control program has two different divisions. One is the road program. The, the road program that is proposed for next year is at sixty-six thousand, four-hundred and sixty-one dollars. It's a less than a thousand-dollar increase over what the current year is. Most, if not all, of that increase is directly related to the two-and-a-quarter percent salary increase. If there's no questions on the road program, we'll go to the shelter program, and I know Anne Marie is here, and the program budget for the animal shelter operation is a hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. It's approximate, excuse me, seven thousand-dollar increase over the current year program. Most of that increase outside of personnel is related to expanded costs for operating the new facility. Then you want to address the facility?
Well, the facility is about eighty percent complete. What needs to be, what remains to be done is some interior work and some landscaping, but the major holdup, and I have to call it a holdup, is a, is a problem, for the lack of a better term, between the general contractor and one of the subcontractors in regard to the HVAC mechanics from within. We have a weekly meeting, a construction meeting, and we're trying to facilitate and negotiate a resolution to that matter. We are making progress, substantial progress, so I don't think, I don't think it's going to be much of a holdup any longer. What I'm looking at, and I'm hoping for, an opening of the shelter sometime in, in the spring. Now, I'm not going to say early spring, sometime late spring, possibly, possibly early summer, maybe June, but as soon as we get moving on it, on this HVAC problem, I think, I think we're going to be okay. You, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a beautiful facility, it's going to, you know, it's probably the best animal shelter in the, in the east, and so we're high on it, and that's the best we can do at, at this point. We have a great working relationship with the, with the general contractor, and he's trying to resolve his internal problems, but that's a problem that he has with the subs that, that we really can't control.
Design issue, issue, or financial?
Well, I think on his part, although he hasn't talked his numbers with me, I think it's financial on his part, but, you know, I think it's the, the change in the cost of, of the mechanic, mechanics itself inside, you know, the equipment inside, the heating elements inside, the cooling elements inside, there's been some price changes, which has affected his ability to successfully negotiate with his subcontractor to get the work done.
Did we have a contingency in that, Steve, in that contract?
We have been using portions of the contingency. I think the real issue here is that there's a specification that they have to meet.
Yeah.
The low bidder or the subcontractor was attempting to submit proposals that would not meet that spec, now attempting to get compliance. We don't see the subcontractor when we're doing a contract. All we see is the main contractor, it's his responsibility. But that does sometimes lead to serious delays in time, and also prevents or precludes other work from being completed on a timely schedule. I think we're making progress. The person I'd really like to recognize, though, is Anne Marie Mitchell, who runs our shelter and has run the shelter, and really is responsible for a lot of the donations that have made the development of that facility, a million-dollar facility at no cost to the town. And having said that, I think the biggest thing we need to recognize is what she's put up with for the last year in terms of the work environment that she's in. She's done an outstanding job to pound animal shelter services, not just South Kingston, but also Narragansett animals. Narragansett is paying in excess of sixty thousand dollars toward the cost of the facility to be able to have their animals there. Based on the size of the facility, we've also made available to other towns proposals if they are interested in the regional service. And another way of trying to defray what our costs are for the, for the pound services. But we operate really with two full-time employees and a couple of part-time people, and they do a remarkable job. And hopefully, we'll get a new facility there that Anne Marie can bask in the air conditioning for the summer.
And she's been invaluable, too, during our construction process. She attends the meetings, and some of her input is something that we wouldn't normally think about, consider, and so she's been a great help during the construction phase also.
Okay, if there's no questions, can we move on to the communications department? The narrative on page twenty-four, I think, is important, because I think that there are many times that people do not recognize what the size and the scope of the communications division is. Brian Blue runs the communications division for us. Brian, you want to come up? As far as the, I think it's important that people look at what has to be accomplished. There's two main responsibilities here. One is the, the maintenance of the, of the cable plant itself, and right now, we're maintaining over a hundred miles of aerial wire. And the wire isn't just for the fire alarm systems itself, the wire is used for all of the connections of municipal buildings. It's also used for the alarm systems telemetry with our water department and our sewer, sewer system with its pumping stations. In addition to that, this department's responsibility also requires enforcement of the fire safety codes. That means that for any commercial structure or any residential structure over four units, building plans must be reviewed and approved and inspected before certificate of occupies are issued with this department, with two people. And as I say, two and a half people at this point. If you recall, we had through three full-time positions that was pulled back to two and a half as a means of budget reductions a year ago. So we're continuing to be able to meet the mission, we're continuing to be able to meet the workflow that's there, but this is another department that, if the question was, is there more money to be spent, the money would be spent in terms of augmenting the workforce as far as the aerial work, which, which is a difficult chore to be able to keep, keep up with. Some of the factors are listed in that narrative, and I think that they're important. When somebody questions why you would need a communications department, South Kingston's unique in a lot of ways. The fact that we have a volunteer fire department that does an extraordinary job for the community, yet does not provide for the fire alarm function within that fire department, or the EMS function within that department. So what we're, what we do as a municipality is different than what most communities do, because in most communities, in a paid fire department, Brian's job would be within that fire department itself. The budget for the two thousand and eleven, twelve year is recommending a sixteen-hundred-dollar increase, sixteen-hundred and fifty-one dollar increase, total cost of a hundred and seventy-nine, one-eighty-one. If you have any questions of me or of Brian, we're ready for them at this time.
Any questions here at the table?
You do a good job.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your support. I've got a lot of activity going on, and we take a lot of pride in what we do, and just really appreciate your support.
I know when we took that tour a couple of years ago, it was just unbelievable with, and I know that it's even manifold, you know, probably twice as much since our last tour, so, thank you.
Well, thank you.
And one of the things that we keep trying to do is to make sure that we build municipal service rather than municipal departments, and Chief talked about the importance of the new dispatch center, and I want to also recognize that a great deal of the hands-on work was done through Brian, being able to do the wiring as an electrician, and to be able to make sure that the dispatch center met what the fire functions we're going to need to have there as well. And this is what's important in South Kingston, is that there aren't barriers between the different departments, and we've got people that are willing to work together to be able to accomplish what is in the, the town's best interest. And certainly, you spent quite a few hours over there.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
If there's no questions, we'll go to radio services. Radio services budget is a, is a budget of two thousand dollars, which we use for consulting services to be able to keep the repeater system up on the water towers for the tele, for the backup radio system. As councils are aware, we transitioned into an eight-hundred megahertz radio system a couple of years ago. We also have the VH, VHF radio system as a backup system if the, if the eight-hundred were to go down. To be able to maintain full service throughout the community, we need to be able to maintain the data transmission lines and better, the repeater and the satellite, satellite system receivers that are located in various points within the community. So that two thousand dollars is the line item, if in fact troubleshooting is necessary. In addition to that, this is, this line item pays for the battery replacements or radio replacements with the, the town's existing radio systems. This year, there's thirty-nine hundred and fourteen dollars worth of expenses. Most of that is associated with replacement batteries for the eight-hundred megahertz portable radios, both in the police department and EMS. There's also a couple of shoulder mics that the EMS uses for contact with the hospital, and a couple of replacement radios within the Poxon Recreation Department. So that's the entirety of that fifty-nine hundred and fourteen dollar account. The, the next account is the harbor master, harbor patrol program. Barry's here, if there's questions that, that council may have on that program. The overall budget request for, for this year, let me grab it. Is the same budget as the current year, and we're looking at twenty-nine, nine, forty-five. Again, one of my concerns here will be on the gasoline account. That's one of the lion's share of outside of the personnel account, on whether we're going to be able to accommodate that, based on the hours that we have forecasted that we would be able to spend on the, on the pond, because this gets even more difficult for us, because we're purchasing at the pond front itself, rather than being able to buy through the, the bulk service that we have at the Public Services Department. The details for the department in terms of the boating season, we're hoping to, again, be able to use the URI students as the assistant harbor, harbor masters for the, for the, for the summer. We will continue to have a collaborative program with the town of Narragansett to be able to provide better coverage on the, both the Narrow River and on the Salt Pond. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to deal with those, or have Barry address them.
Any questions here at the table?
Yeah, and I know that this department was cut maybe a year or two ago, so we know that your plate is full as well, so we thank you for your services.
Carol?
Barry? The new law that requires people born after a certain year to get a boating license, do you see many violations of that? Like, don't they have to get a license now if you were born?
You have to get a DEM license, anyone born after January first, nineteen eighty-six. It was a effort to phase in licensing for everyone. It's going to take twenty years or so, but joining states also have, Connecticut has mandatory licensing for everyone that operates a vessel.
So do you, do you find that you, you're issuing citations for that at all? I mean, do you see people, are they getting the license?
Pretty much, we're doing education on that matter, because the state's done a very good job of educating, and the, the actual law's been in effect for at least five years now. So through our training, through the state's requirement for training for boat safety certification, most everyone's aware of it. It's also mandatory for everybody that operates a jet ski, no matter what age they are. So it's-
It's not a license, it's a certification, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's a boating safety certificate, right. It's not technically a license.
I think they give it at the high school, even. I think I saw through one of their-
They're currently doing a boat safety and co, and cooperation with the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. They hold annual training. I think they're doing one right now through the high school after school.
And how many hours do you have to do to complete that certification, do you know?
The state's requirement is eight hours, okay? The Coast Guard Auxiliary, I think, gives like a thirty-five-hour class. They go into in-depth with trailering and, and all kinds of good things, but the basic boating safety requirements through the state is an eight-hour class.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further questions here for Barry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next department is the emergency medical services. As the narrative indicates, we operate a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation for EMS. In two thousand and one, we began running a second twelve-hour ambulance, seven days a week. Right now, our full complement is sixteen full-time paramedics and eight per diems that complement the, the full-time workforce. The department has been instrumental in training of other municipal departments on the AD's requirements. The paramedic grade level of service that's provided also provides us with the ability to provide specialized services in emergency cases to be, where cardiac concerns are, are presented by the patient, and in fact, we can provide services by delivery to the Rhode Island or Hasbro hospitals as a means of providing them with better service based on physician's orders. Majority of our mutual aid calls are happening after the second ambulance goes, goes off duty. I think one of the things that needs to be addressed in the next contract will be the hours of operation for the second rig. An analysis has to be completed and will be completed before those negotiations start this fall as to the number of calls that are occurring and what hours. It would appear as if the 7:00 to 7:00 should probably be either 10:00 to 10:00 or 11:00 to 11:00 at night to be able to provide service availability during the times when the greatest number of call potential is available. But that would require manning changes within the labor contract, which will be quite difficult to obtain based on existing workforce wanting to maintain existing hour schedules. The department generates about $500,000 to $550,000 a year in emergency medical service billing that's net to the town. Billing would be substantially more than that, but the billing is waived for town of South Kingstown residents that are using the service. We take all of those monies that come in through the billing service into a special reserve fund and then that special reserve fund transfers the money on its availability into the general fund. For this year, we've budgeted $510,000.
$500,000.
$500,000 as a revenue for the 11-12 year to pay down a portion of the cost of the program. Program cost at this point is $1,143,121, about a 2.2% increase over what the current year budget is. About $20,000 or the, almost the entire increase is directly associated to personnel costs, either on an overtime or on dealing with the part-time per diem employees who are servicing. This year, we are also looking at replacing our EMS coordinator. Keith Richards will be leaving the town's employ. We are in the middle of a recruitment process at this point and have conducted interviews and no final decisions have been made either on when Keith's last day will be or when a new replacement will take place. He will be sorely missed. He's difficult, very, very difficult for us to replace based on the management skills that he has as well as the medical skills that he has and the network and relationship that he has with South County Hospital. Hopefully, we can find a replacement that can, in time, be able to meet all of those standards that Keith has set over the past several years, or I should say his 20 years with the town. I keep kidding him that if I don't replace him, he can't leave, and so far, that's worked. But I'm not sure that that's going to continue much longer. I'd answer any questions or Jackie or the Chief can on any of the questions on the EMS program.
Questions? Jim?
Yes, Steve. Collection Agency, didn't we hire a collection agency a year or two ago? And what has been the performance on?
Yeah, that's mainly on the load vehicles that use the Rossi Law. Although, some of the EMS, but that area is a little...
We do hire a third-party company that does all of the billing. We submit to the billing company all of what the runs are that have been had. They will then do the billing on the town's behalf. We have a third-party contract with that. But as far as the delinquencies, as Alan said, we would just take those through Rossi if it was appropriate.
Further questions here at the table?
I'd be remiss, I think I jumped over the fire company budget. $3,600, which is the $400 for each of the nine fire companies in the town. Okay, that brings us to having to change pages, one more or the last time for tonight. And we're going to go back to page GF 25. GF 25 will start us with the Municipal Insurance.
Steve, I'm sorry. Can I just make one last thank you for the safety of our people in town, Chief, and Jackie, and our pets, Anne Marie, and our waterfront and communications for all the protection? So, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne Marie. I didn't even see you back there. You're blacked out.
I love that. Come back in style.
I know, no questions?
Two years in a row.
Thank you.
It could be cut down. That's totally back in style.
Yeah, that's back in style. Pin stripes, David Letterman.
Oh, well, okay.
Okay, if we're on GF 25 or N41, Municipal Insurance budget is $196,000, $1,400 less than what was budgeted in the current year. The overall cost of insurance for each of the different special revenue funds as well as the utility funds is estimated at $345,000. Each of those revenue funds or enterprise funds provide us with reimbursement for the cost of those services. So the net cost to general fund program is $196,000. And this deals with all of the town's property liability as well as excess liability insurance. We also have a line item in there for the deductible for any of the claims that come against the town. So it's $196,000. If there's no questions or are you still looking for pages? GF 25 and N41.
Okay, thank you.
Unemployment is the next account. We spent $48,000 in the 9-10 year. We've budgeted $40,000. We're not seeing a lot of expense going through unemployment at this point. I think it may be, the estimate of the $15,000 will probably increase. At this point, we're looking at, I think, probably closer to $35,000 or $40,000. We're recommending $35,000 next year. This is an account that you really don't have a lot of control over. You know it's going to go up if you're laying people off. You're not sure where it's going to be if you have, we have to change some of our employment practices. What we're seeing is unemployment claims coming in on people that are supposed to be working, summer work for us, and they're going for unemployment once the summer expires. We've got to take a look at that in terms of whether or not that's an appropriate vehicle because essentially, it almost doubles the pay of what a person makes during the summer if they're eligible for this type of a unemployment comp. We, unlike a private employer on unemployment, we pay dollar-for-dollar. Anything that's claimed, we don't pay any administrative expense in. We don't pay as a percentage of salary. Ours is on a direct reimbursement basis. So if we have $48,000 worth of claims, we will pay $48,000 to the state. It's done on a monthly billing system. Life insurance, there's no change. The life insurance is at $12,600. Both the life insurance and the municipal insurance, we purchase all of our insurance through the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. The trust serves at this point, I believe, 34 communities and school districts and is the premier insurance provider and risk management provider for Rhode Island municipalities and school districts. The life insurance costs that we have are very low in terms of what the cost per thousand face value is, as you can see, because we're talking system-wide for all of the 168 employees in the general fund at a cost of around $12,600. There's varying dollar amounts as far as the life insurance that's provided, up to, I think, $50,000 within the police and EMS and as low as $10,000 for the non-organized municipal employees. Moving on to the retirement system. We went over this on Monday night. I certainly can go over it a second time, but we've already gone over the rates. Unless there's any questions, I'll move on.
Social Security.
Mr. Soc... The Social Security or FICA is a percentage of salary, 7.65% of all salary, both full-time and part-time personnel as well as on any earnings that occur, overtime, whatever you've got there. So what that does is it looks at all of your personnel, full-time, part-time, seasonal longevity, and the FICA is required to be 7.65% of that. The employee also pays 7.65% of their salary into that. So you've got an employee right now who will have 7.65% on FICA and you'll have an employee that's also, if it's a police officer, 9% going for retirement. If it's a general municipal employee, it would be 7%. So they would have the first 14.65% on a municipal employee they don't see based on the cost sharing that's there. Municipal retirement, we've talked about. I can answer any questions on it, but I think we went through that in detail the other night. The healthcare is, we've got the same charts, but let's look at the overall program. If you look at the detail on page 25, both the retirement system and the health insurance, you'll see new line items from prior years. The new line items are what we're being required to report to the state as far as the amount of dollars that goes out for the different segments of the work group. So you've got, what is the cost of pension for full-time employees, for police retirees, for EMS retirees and so forth, so that the public will be able to get better information as to where the retirement dollar distribution goes. The same holds through with the healthcare budget. On healthcare, we are now breaking out the cost to be able to document what the cost for medical and dental services for active employees, how much the town is paying for the medical insurance for retirees, or the dental for the retirees or the dental insurance for active members. I will say that the only dental that's provided in retirement is under a disability where the person would be eligible for that dental plan through the police department disability up till age 65 because under 45, 191 of the general laws, we are required to provide full benefits up till age 65 for any person who's disabled in the line of duty as a police officer or a firefighter, which would include EMS. I think at this point, we've got one or two officers that are receiving...
No, there's six.
Six that are receiving the dental in the disability retirement program. So as you can see, the overall cost for the healthcare is $3,21,680. That includes the full cost of the direct contribution that's necessary for the OPEB as well. So you've got full funding of the ARC on the healthcare, full funding of the ARC as far as your retirement system. Those are two key, important things that every municipality will need to do if the new state budget is adopted as presented. Are there questions on either the retirement or the healthcare account? If not, we'll move on to the workers' compensation. Workers' compensation premium again is purchased through the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. The trust provides not just the insurance coverage, but also provides a full boat of risk management programs, practices, best management practices that are used to try to create better and better work environments and safer work environments. Training is done where there's repetitive accidents that are reported. There's programs that would be offered as a means of trying to reduce that liability in the future. They also work with occupational nursing as a means of trying to get people back on the job as quickly as possible. The recommendation is for $125,000, which is well below the amount from the current year based on what we're seeing as a premium cost for the year. The Interlocal provided a distribution of dividends this year that paid down some of the cost associated with the plan. We're expecting the same dividend has been declared and we will be able to pay down a cost of the premium with the dividend reimbursement that comes to the town, and that'll be made after July 1st. The next account is the debt service account. I think the council's familiar with this. We talked about this the other night. Based on the decisions that have been made and approved through the council as far as our capital program is concerned, we have a structured debt service program where we're trying to minimize the amount of debt service that goes out based on its impact on the tax rate. At this point, next year's tax rate will have about a 60 cent per thousand tax rate associated with debt service for both municipal and school program. Our overall debt service cost will be about $4.1 million. Third-party revenues will provide about $1,670,000. So the net property taxes that go to the debt service will be about $2.534 million. Last year, we had a tax rate of around 61 cents, so we'll be dropping about a penny. That's if the 7 cent were to hold true. The final account is the capital budget, which is $18,000 over the existing year's program level. That capital budget is adopted by the town council during the last week of January of this year. That concludes the, that concludes the accounts other than contingency. We are proposing a level funding of $65,000 for the general fund contingency for the 11-12 year, just as we had in place in 10-11. Those are the accounts. I would like to just provide the council with a very short update on the governor's budget. I've provided you with a worksheet tonight that I prepared this morning that looks at the revisions or revised governor's budget for the 2011 year as well as the governor's proposal for the 2012 year. Essentially, the revisions that the governor's estimates that are different from what was budgeted are minimal. The only one where there's really any substantive change was his estimate for the receipts from the meal tax were higher than when the budget was prepared. We also were estimating that in our budget document that the meals tax was generating more money than had been anticipated. So there's really no change, changes or surprises on the governor's restatement of estimated municipal aid for the 2010-2011 year. When we look at the 2012 year, the first column under the 2012 year says proposed. That's the town manager's budget. The next column is what the dollar amounts are that are shown in the governor's budget. And the third column is the difference between the two. So essentially, when we look at aid for the general state aid, the payments in lieu of taxes are being presented in the governor's budget at about $16,000 more than we had budgeted. The second is the MAST program. The MAST program is the Municipal Accountability, Stabilization, and Transparency Program. Now, when you look at that, it says that the town... Now, when you look at that, it says that the town of South Kingstown is going to receive 301,889 dollars. That's not true. What the town of South Kingstown will receive is 301,000 dollars if the governor's budget is adopted, whereby the, the two-tier tax proposal that he submitted goes through. Because the way the MAST program would be funded would be that when the sales tax drops from 7% to 6%, and you have a meals tax of 1%, you would, right now, it's 7 cents. 7% plus 1 is 8%. Next year, if his budget were to be approved with a two-tier reduction in the tax scheme, the sales tax would drop to 6%, and the meals tax would be at 1, and the MAST would be the second one, so that it would stay at 8%. Because right now, when you buy food at a restaurant, you pay 8%. 7% sales tax, 1% meals tax. July 1st, if his budget went through, you would pay 6% sales tax and 2% meal tax. 1% would come to the community based on point of service. That second 1% would stay with the State Department of Treasury, and they would distribute it based on the 2009 general revenue sharing formula, which is really a per capita distribution. Based on that per capita distribution, they're estimating that our share of that 1% new meals tax would be 301,889. Participation in the MAST program will also, if it were approved, would also require the municipalities to be able to meet specific reporting requirements to the state. None of those pose a problem for South Kingstown. For the most part, what that is attempting to do is to require communities to provide 100% of their ARC on both the OPEB requirements and on their pension requirements. So, there's also other reporting requirements as far as reports that had to be, have to be submitted to the state, or compliance with a new uniform code of accounting that the state has yet to develop. But there are, there are nothing within the conditions of, for program participation, if it were funded, that the town of South Kingstown would have difficulty being able to participate in. I would not recommend that we would assume receipt of those dollars for two reasons. One, I have no idea at this point, the success or potential success that is associated with the governor's proposal for implementation of the two-tier sales tax program. And obviously, you can't collect that second percent unless you drop the sales tax by 1% to begin with. Either that, or they would have to take it up to a 9% on meals, which would be a percent higher than what was, what was proposed at this time. So, I, I would not recommend that you'd consider that that would be something that could plug any budget hole. If the money were approved and did become a revenue during the 11-12 year, it then could be used for, for varying purposes. It could go to fund balance. It could go as a means of paying more toward the, the ARC associated, or more than the ARC payment that's required on the OPEB funding. There's any number of ways it can be treated. If the program was in place, it would become a base revenue in the 2012, 2013 year. I've looked at the state aid to education numbers that have been provided. There's still not adequate information for me to be able to say what the implications are of what the governor's budget are to what the school budget was that has been submitted and has been presented as a component of the manager's budget. The reason I say that is that one of the line items of aid was group home reimbursement for 325,000 dollars. Neither Alan or I can locate that within the documentation that's been provided by the state. However, the bottom-line number that the state's using for the 2011 year would, appears as if it would contain the 325,000 dollars. So, we need to get some verification on that. Second, the number that has been presented, again, we're not sure whether the group aid is in place for the 2012 year or how it's being treated. It doesn't show up in any of the documentation presented with the budget. It maybe just have been blended into the budget numbers. What's curious is that if we got the first year of a formula implementation, we have not seen any of the numbers for the number of students, the value of the tax roll that's being used, the median family income. None of those dollar amounts have been shown to us, other than to say that the first year reduction for implementation of the, the funding formula is approximately 375,000 dollars for South Kingstown. In the best-case scenario, I would suggest that, or the worst-case scenario, I would say is probably a 53,000 dollar underfunding to what the schools had expected in terms of revenue. If, in fact, we see the 325,000 dollars as included in that total, we'd be down 53,000. If it's not, certainly, we'd be in a much better shape. It's going to take us a while. Hopefully, by the time we meet with the school committee, we'll have a better understanding of what the revenue implications are based on the governor. But again, understand that the budget process that is unfolding is that the General Assembly, both House Finance and Senate Finance, will be reviewing the governor's budget. Any changes that they make in any of the program proposals that he's put on the table could have impact either on any of the revenue streams that are listed here. It would appear as if most of the municipal revenues, because there aren't many, are relatively safe. The real question is going to be getting the detail necessary to confirm the numbers associated with education aid. Al, you want to comment on any of that?
I just think there's language in some of the, the material that we did receive that would appear that the group home aid is not going to be included. It's going to be a one-year deferral on that. So, I would agree with what Steve said, is the 53,000 would be probably what they're going to be short, based on what they've, what's in the budget at the current time.
But once we get better information, we'll, we'll certainly provide an update. And again, this sheet that I gave you tonight is, is our first, first review. But really, what the review tells me is that there really is no changes that we're going to recommend in our revenue structure based on what's been presented by the governor at this time. I think the 301, you know, there's a quid pro quo here. There's an attempt to get municipal official support for the two-tiered tax proposal as a means of creating a revenue source. And I think that the tax proposal needs to stand on its own merit, rather than the potential to provide 17 million dollars in funding to the cities and towns. And if they really were serious about wanting to create this as a new general revenue sharing program, which would also require compliance with funding of the pensions and funding of, of OPEB, they could have done it as an independent increase on the meals tax, rather than tying it to the reduction in the sales tax proposal. That's, that really is going to have a much broader discussion. So, that's as much as I can provide for you tonight. And any questions I can answer on it?
Does anybody have any questions here at the table? For the record, any questions from the audience? I know I said that last night, and I didn't realize there was somebody hiding behind the pulpit here, so. All right. Are we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Right.
Meeting adjourned. See you on.